I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for October 4th, 2016. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Berman, Mayor Burt.
Here.
Councilmember DeBois.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Seth. Councilmember Holman. Councilmember Niss. Vice Mayor Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wolbach. Six present.
Thank you. Our first item is a proposed closed session item with the City Attorney regarding existing litigation. Stats versus City of Palo Alto. And do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Vice Mayor Scharf, second by Councilmember Phil Seth. Please vote. And that passes seven zero, so we will now go into closed session. From a closed session item, and we have no reportable action. So we will now convene a study session with our Library Advisory Commission. And I would like to turn it over to kick things off to the Chair of the Commission.
Thank you. And I guess I'll just go stand up and start the presentation.
Oh, okay. You want to from out there?
Yeah.
Great.
I think it makes sense because then I can look at the screen better.
Or you can sit up here too. But she can't.
Can I move the slides?
She doesn't have.
I can.
Maybe we can.
You can give me this. All right. That's fine. I don't need the keyboard, but I need that, I think. Hang on while we try the technology here. Okay, great. So first we wanted to thank the City Council for making this session available for us so we can talk about the library. And just introduce the members of the Library Advisory Commission. Sheena Chin is the former Chair. We last met with the City Council when Sheena was still the Chair, and she was continued to be Chair for nine months or a year, or something like that, when I started. Bob Moss, who I think is not here yet. Don McDougal. And Doug Hagan. So thank you guys all for coming and everything. So I'll have to look at yours. All right. So think of this as our table of contents. So we have great libraries. Our libraries are providing superior services for Palo Alto. They're very popular gathering places. They provide outstanding programs for our community. They're paying special attention to our diverse population, focusing on teens, integrating with bike programs, including the Walk and Roll program. And for council members, we have a little brochure about Walk and Roll for you. We've had increased engagement with teens, especially since the opening of Mitchell. Increased virtual access for the digital age, and we're providing very competitive services compared to our neighboring communities. And we do pay attention statistically to what's going on with the other communities. So Don and I met with Mayor Burt as we worked on this study session. He was talking about the importance of using information and technology to improve the lives of our citizens for today's and future generations. That's the focus of the library. Yep, all right. So the Library Advisory Commission met in each of the five library branches in the last year, which gave us a chance to be more acquainted with the branches themselves. We let the public know, but we actually didn't have anybody from the community at those meetings. We don't usually have anybody come to our meetings, just so you know. During that time, we reviewed the following things. The Sierra Project, which was the step and part of the technology funding project. The digital collection, adult programs, teen programs. Overall use of overall use of all the libraries, including use at college terraces. We also regularly monitor community feedback that comes to the library director. And this last year, there was, there were bedbugs in the library. We paid attention to that, how that was being treated, which has come along very well. The library is regularly checking for the bedbugs, and no more have been found. Use of bikes. We've monitored book drops, noise, 3D printing. So Commissioners McDougal and Moss attended the ALA Conference. Commissioners Chin and Moss attended a CPLA workshop. And we also participate in other events. As part of what we do, as I mentioned, we also look at the comparative statistics that are provided by the State of California for other libraries in the state. And particularly, we identified 10 other community libraries that we are checking on a regular basis, yearly, to see how our library compares. We also look at San Francisco, San Jose, and Santa Clara County, which are not comparable in size to us, but just to understand what the services are. And you'll get little tidbits of those statistics later as we go on. we've tried to provide a lot of pictures. The libraries are bringing our community together. We have here a picture of Mitchell Park. Teen bikes at Mitchell Park. Girls coding session, I believe, at Mitchell Park, and Rinconada Library. So bringing our community together. We have five branch libraries. I'm sure everybody knows that. But what this does is it really provides, you know, it improves the accessibility of libraries for our community. It's something the community chose to have as their approach for libraries, and it improves its walkability and so on. The spaces themselves, they're award-winning spaces. We have awards from the American Institute of Architects. The San Francisco chapter gave us a merit award. Mitchell Park Library was a Library Journal Landmark Libraries winner. And California Library Association gave us, Association gave us a PR Excellence Award for grand opening Mitchell Park. So we do very, very well. And we provide competitive services and award-winning services. This year, so this is 2015, 2015, the library is again a three-star library for the Library Journal, which is a countrywide survey of libraries and their services. And that's very good in the set of libraries that we mentioned earlier. Only one other, Redwood City did get four stars, and I think that's possibly because they report that they have a large number of programs. And San Francisco and Santa Clara County are also four-star libraries. They are much, much larger library systems than we have. And also, in the National Citizens Survey, our public library services were rated excellent or good by 90% of those interviewed. And that's up 10% year-over-year. And 8% more people reported that they had been visiting the library in the survey this year as well. So they're being used. And for our overall statistics and comparisons, library visits were up slightly overall, which is the first real year with new libraries open. This is 2014, 2015 fiscal year. And we led other local communities in visits and in circulation per capita. And program attendance was also up. And so although we're low in population, and somewhat low in comparison to the other 10 cities that we check against, we're high in collection size, hours opened, number of public access computers, virtual visits, and circulation per capita. And we're going back to my bullets, popular teen destinations. We have online access to the library as well as physical access to the library. And social media outreach through Facebook and Twitter. So here we have more engagement in the library. We want to specially notice the Bike Pals program. I don't know if you guys have heard about the Bike Pals program, but this upper right-hand corner picture shows the Bike Pals bike, and it's physically in evidence at the back of the room. So please feel free to visit it, check it out. And Monique, you said that the, we had 2,500? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Monique LaConcez, season head of the library director. Yeah, in the first month of having it out, we estimate that we reached about 2,500 people in the month of September through using the bike at the Moonlit Walk, at the, at, you know, a Pally Club Day, different things like that, so. And if you have your picture taken on it, taken on it, which you should do, there's a hashtag so that you can post it, and we'll add it to our photographs. Thanks.
Other little items, just, thank you, Monique. Other little items, just to check in the let's see, is my cursor going to work? This picture over here is one of the study rooms at Rinconada. We have study rooms in all the libraries. So pictures from downtown, pictures from college terrace, and children's library. So the library really has outstanding programs. This picture, set collage, just shows a little bit of the, something about the programs that we have. We have the New Americans program. Let's see, this is really, I think I'm now changing, changing the wrong slide. There we go. So we have the New Americans program at the upper left-hand corner, our firefighters that we've seen before. You can see that there's an advertisement for a presentation from Google on digital awareness. More New Americans. And then even some handwritten signs pointing out things like our knitting program. It's a very diverse set of programs. Neat things are happening at the library. So community engagement is up 32% for preschool and elementary children, and 66% for teens year-over-year. The programs in attendance are up significantly. We actually had 38.5 increase in program numbers, numbers of programs, that's programs that are offered, with a 19% overall increase in attendance. And as I mentioned earlier, the New Americans program is a program that the library started. It's, let's see, Family Program Series Designed for New Americans and Visitors to Learn the Customs and Values of Their New Home. It's running March through December 2016. And there's also ESL. And an adult course in how to learn pronunciation. And a citizenship corner where new Americans are helped to understand what kinds of resources are available towards study towards citizenship. And, wait a minute, I'm trying to skip over the most important thing. Many of these programs are actually funded by state money, or government grants, or donations, in large part donations from the Friends of the Palo Alto Library. So it's not, it's not as much a huge section of the budget, as I understand it, although it is, of course, something that the staff spend a good deal of time on. Is that about right, Monique?
Yes. If we have a speaker or presenter who charges that comes from the Friends, or is paid for through a grant related to that program, staff time is spent on preparing for it, or making the arrangements. Even supplies are paid for through the grant funding from the Friends. So evaluation is done on staff time, but for the most part, that's how that's separated out. And frankly, without the Friends money, we wouldn't have really a summer reading program. They, they pretty much fund that entirely, so it's a great opportunity. And we maximize the use. We do try to find, like Dan Russell, we're very fortunate. He lives in the community. He's, he works at Google, and he volunteers and does this for us once or twice a year.
Thank you, Monique. And more pictures of some of the programs that we have. You know, the programs bring people into the library. They're a way for people to get together and use the library buildings and services. Okay. So we wanted to spend a little time just focusing on teens in the library. Mitchell Park, as you know, has a teen center available. And now it has also a little pre-teen area. So there are seven youth librarians in the library. I believe that's, that number is up. And as we mentioned earlier, increased program participation. This year, there was a teen advisory, Library Advisory Board. 13 teens took part in that program. They met with us at the College Terrace Library. And, and they also I think this picture here with the posted notes, that's from Finals Week cram, but was, they also spent, I think that was part of the results from the from the Teen LACM. Did I have that right?
The teens have made the most of that wall when you enter Mitchell Park, doing all kinds of things. Either surveys of teens, sending messages to each other to encourage them during Finals Week. They created a, following the tragedies in Orlando, they created a memorial there. And so every time you come in, they also did a Pokemon poster, so that you could draw your, the Pokemon that you had caught in the park around the library. So they've, they've used that space to their advantage for short-term information sharing and things like that. So this is just one example of those, of those projects. And I did want to also point out that there is, of course, a teen space at Rinconada Library as well, that is becoming more used. And the Teen Advisory Board plans programs and services for both, both of those libraries.
Great, thank you. So we also do have 3D printing. You guys are probably familiar with the 3D printing that was part of the Makerspace program, which is now actually at Coverly, I think, for the time being. But additional 3D printers have been added. One at Rinconada, and another is planned for downtown. The service has been very, very popular. So let's see, there's public access to the printers. They're not charging for it, but the library staff is assisting use, or actually running the jobs, I think. So, and virtual reality, the new craze. The library has purchased four virtual reality sets. And they're going to look into how to deploy those and make those available. But first, it's experimentation. More pictures of teens. We have mini golf over here. This is a picture of the Facebook page post from Finals Cram. Pokemon, 3D printers, Teen LAC, and pre-teens space. And there were 120 kids that went to the Finals Cram. Okay. Just a little focus on collections and use. We have an increased foreign language collection, the Lucky Day collection. And let's just talk off my bullets. So the book collection size had gone down as part of the, when the libraries were closed, is one of the ways to sort of deal with that situation. It's now slightly up year-over-year, and checkouts are slightly down, which is not inconsistent with other library data across the state and the country. The media collection is down a little bit, and the checkouts are down, not as much. E-books and e-music collection is up hugely. Is that due to addition of just the actual assets, or is it due to a new service also?
It's a result of both. We continue to develop those collections and look at them. We haven't really added any new services. We've worked hard to promote them. And we continue to offer tutors, one-on-one tutoring. If you have a device, you don't know how to download an ebook, or a stream movie, and you'd like some assistance. I know former councilmember Gail Price took advantage of that and had a teen tutor her on two different occasions for, for different items. So, so it's, it's a combination of factors.
Okay, great. Thanks, Monique. And the checkouts in the ebooks and e-music are up considerably. Now, they're up a huge amount, but they're not as big as the circulation of book, books in general, and we should be aware of that. The e-stuff is great, and it's, sounds great statistically, but people do still love books. And we also have, Monique started the Lucky Day collection. So that's a collection of popular books, like bestsellers, that you can take out for a shorter period of time, and they're not subject to hold.
Correct. So they're very popular items, books and DVDs. When you walk into a library branch, you won't know what's on the shelf ahead of time. So it's your lucky day. You show up, and that's what you can check out. You're limited to 10 of those items, and they only check out for one week, compared to the four-week checkout for a regular material. So you still, so you need to read fast. Many people, you know, take as many as they can and then realize, ugh, can't do it. So anyways, it's a, it's another way to satisfy the people who happen to come into the library on a frequent, frequent basis.
Yeah, and it's also, my unofficial survey of various people who talk to me about the library, it seems to have caused people to not say, I can't get the bestsellers at the library, and instead say, I found this at the library. the library, instead say, I found this at the library, which is a whole different attitude. Okay, now we're going to get a little technical. So this year, the Sierra program was rolled out. This was part of the two thousand eleven, two thousand thirteen technology plan, or, I had, I wrote two thousand eleven, I think it's two thousand nine, two thousand thirteen technology plan, which had the idea of a full-service online library branch. So this is kind of a, it's a state of, state-of-the-art, other libraries are using it, open library type of platform, for handling a new catalog upgrade. So all the content appears in the catalog regardless of format or source. Gives you better search results, gives you online links to the digital collection, you can easily put a book on hold through the catalog. It includes, there are two tabs on this catalog, if you've used it. One says catalog, one says catalog plus. Catalog plus is Linkplus interlibrary loan system. And there's a special mobile interface, which is really much needed in these days. It makes it much easier to read things on, and use this stuff on your phone. There are also language preference settings, which is pretty fantastic. So when Donna and I talked to Mary Burt, he said he would be interested in knowing how the digital collection works. So we have a few little examples here. This page shows three pictures, three screen pages from my phone. The screen on the left, at the top, has a little app, let's see, is it going to show on here? Yep. So this little app up here in the left-hand corner is called My Library, it's in beta, but it gives you this picture here. You can click here and search the catalog, and we'll show you a little bit about what that looks like in a bit. You can look at your account, it shows, this is my account, shows that I had at the time, two books checked out, two books on hold, and no fines. And social media is integrated into that. So that's a great way to be able to quickly check things. Each of these apps is actually a separate app that you could use to view your ebooks if, or, or your e-media, if you've checked it out. And we'll talk more about them in detail, but they're different magazines and, and types of books. So, all right, so we talked about part of this already. So the, the mobile app interface, which you click on if you're in My Library, is much more intuitive for mobile use. And you might find that if you were just using Safari, and you did a search for Palo Alto City Library, and then clicked on the catalog, it would show you the mobile part. Yeah, let's see, and I think, I covered everything on these bullets, so we'll just go on to another picture. So this shows that, what the catalog looks like over here, this is the mobile, the mobile app. And this gives you a lot of choices, but basically, each one of these things is one of, one of the possible services that you could use. They are separate services, and that's one of the things that's a little hard to grasp about this digital collection. Our experience with books is that we go to the bookstore, or we go to the library, and we walk down the shelves, and we can pick any book regardless of who the publisher is, but that's not how the digital world works. So just as, if you have an iPhone, you're going to find iPhone apps, and if you have an Android, you have to look for the Android apps, and sometimes the app is not the same, or they're not offered on both platforms. Well, it's sort of similar with the digital books. This little scenario on this slide shows you, let's see, so you would click on, say, the catalog, which is here, and after I've done my catalog search, I'm going to see, find a book. So I was looking for The Human Genome. So here's my book on The Human Genome. When I click on this, then I get to see the cover, some more information, just like I would on Amazon or something, and a button to download. And after I have downloaded it, then in my app, the book shows up, and then I can click on it and read it, or it says, read. As I mentioned, there are multiple vendors. This just shows you multiple apps, they look differently. And I can't tell you off the top of my hat, head, which one of these is, but I think this is Overdrive. So each of these is separate. And magazines, they're all, Zineo offers the magazines, I think, mostly. This is what it looks like, this is what reading a magazine might look like. Music, mostly through Freegal and Hoopla. Let me see if I have anything else we want to mention. And some of the ebooks can be read right inside your web browser also, without necessarily using a particular app, or used on your PC. So we mentioned earlier that Friends of the Palo Alto Library does provide quite a bit of funding for programming, and I just wanted to put this slide up, which is not easy to read. And so, I will help read it for you. This section here, children and, so Faux Paul grant for two thousand fifteen to the library was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So that's through mostly book and other media donations, and their book sales, and the results of the profits of their book sale. They do depend on being able to use Coverly and the facilities provided there, which allow them to deal with the volume of books that they have. They're one of the few places, or service, or, well, whatever one would call that, facilities that you can call, that will come to your house and take your books for you, if you have a very large collection, which is a service which does get them more interesting collections. And they do some really good things, including selling the more expensive books, the more valuable books on Amazon. So they, they do depend on that storage at Coverly, and they did want us to bring up to the city council that that's important to them. They hope that whatever happens to the disposition of Coverly, that we keep in mind that Faux Paul needs space. And they would like to stay at Coverly if they can. So the, the data here, reading again, where's my mouse? So this section here, the blue section, children and teens programs, is twenty percent of that grant, and that's about thirty-five thousand dollars. The book function, function was about eighty-eight thousand, and the leased books, about thirty K, which is the, I keep losing my mouse, this blue section here. So, and community programs were about twelve K. So together, about fourteen thousand dollars and twenty percent of the Faux Paul grant went toward programming, programs at the library. So that is most of what we wanted to tell you in terms of data. We have a couple other things to consider. Library hours were increased last year. Actually, this, there's a typo on this slide, about September twenty fifteen. The number of hours was increased by thirty-six additional hours open across the board. So basically, Rinconada and Mitchell are now open ten to nine on weekdays, and ten to six on weekends. Children's hours were extended, now they're ten to six on weekdays and Saturday, and Sunday, one to five. And it's, the hours were also sort of more normalized, so it's much easier to realize what, what the state is. All the libraries open at ten, close at six, unless they're Mitchell or Rinconada, when they close at nine, except on weekends, when they close at six, like everything else closes anyway. So, and we think this has been very well, well-accepted by, by the community. And the library will probably be looking at acquisition of new technology assets going forward, so it's something to think about. The LAC does have some future topics planned for consideration, for presentations. We'll be looking at the library volunteer program, we're looking at Project Safety Net, three D printing and virtual reality, and library marketing and social media use programs. So we'd like to open the floor up for questions, comments. Do I hit this?
That's okay.
Or that's yours?
Well, thank you. That's really quite an incredible report, and, and an amazing amount of, of activities and initiatives going on in the library by all the work that you do, and all the great work that our staff does. So just thank you both for all that exciting stuff. So what we can do is open it up to council members for questions, and also for members of the commission, if they wanted to add any supplemental information or, or thoughts. And I'll kick it off, the council member Holman, because we can't use the lights, people need to raise their hand, and I'll keep an eye open.
Thank you, and I agree with Mary Burt, what a remarkable presentation, and what a remarkable body of work. It's just really, it's really phenomenal. You've made us all proud, and I hope you are all proud of the accomplishments. This is pretty remarkable. I have one question, I didn't find it in any of the charts here, is, you know, we have several libraries that are closed on Sunday, and wondering what the most, the days are that have the most visits. So in other words, if we would open on, you know, Thursday's at College Terrace, is that the best thing? Would it be to open on Sundays, would that be the better thing? So how, do we have any information on that?
So I actually do not. I suspect we would need to get back to you on, so you're saying, are there any days that they are open now that appear to have lower usage, that might be better choices for it to be closed? Is that what you're asking?
Well, that's putting it a different way. My, my question really had a different thrust to it, was if we were going to open College Terrace, for instance, because it's closed three days a week, would the best day, best day to open it, would it be Thursday or Sunday, for instance?
I see, the best day to open.
So do you have any records on what the biggest visitation days are at the other libraries?
I see, yeah, okay.
Yeah, actually, we have the ability to look at, to do two different things. One is check circulation records per hour, we can look at, in some cases, we do sampling of attendance, because College Terrace, I don't believe has a door counter at this point. It's a, it's a technically, you know, getting the plugs in the right place, and you have a, you've got two entrances, the same as Rinconada. But yes, we can get to that information and see, track the use for all libraries by, you know, day, by hour, and figure out what the attendance would be. Of course, we can't ju, you know, guess, would, would more people come to College Terrace on Sunday as opposed to Thursday, unless we just ask the community and did a survey, you know, if it were possible, what day would you more, be more likely? We do seem to get a lot of people who walk over from businesses and companies in that area. So, you know, so that's, you know, the question is, is there a balance, is there a balance, and, and how do we satisfy that?
So I'll wrap it up with this, because I'm sure other colleagues have questions too, but I'm just wondering if it would be better to be open on a Thursday, because there's, as you say, there's the business community that's not very far away, and also there's a daycare right there joining it. So does that also prompt people to come and maybe stay longer? So, and then when you come back with that information, or report back with that information, maybe through the city manager, whatever, also, what the cost would be to open on that additional Thursday? For instance?
Can I try, try answering that? We've, we've talked to Monique about doing a survey, because it's not just College Terrace. When you talk to somebody who lives in, in, in Midtown, they want to know why that library isn't open till ten o'clock at night, or whatever. And so we've recommended that we try and do a survey, and Monique has talked about trying to do a survey that would give us better information. What we do know is it costs about seven hundred dollars an hour to keep the library open, and there's, and if we upped all libraries to fundamentally being open seven days a week, or, and, and to the nine o'clock, or even the ten o'clock, the nine million dollar budget that Monique has now would end up being about a million, a million dollars more. And so we don't think that that's sustainable in the long run, if there's risk of a downturn. So we've, we're trying to figure out the best, the best way to do that, and I think Monique's team is doing a good job of trying to analyze that. There's other alternatives that should be considered in that, too. There are now machines, the, the success of the Lucky Day, you know, seven-day thing. You can actually get machines now, that we could put in a shopping center in Town and Country, for example, that would have two hundred and fifty books in it, and would be available twenty-four hours a day, and also would be a place where I could pick up my holds, and a place where I could drop off books. Does that make sense or not? But that should also be part of a survey that we're looking at.
Great, thank you.
Okay, council member DeBois.
Yeah, thank you for the great report, and thanks to all of you guys for serving. Appreciate it. I actually really liked the Lucky Day Collection, that's a great idea of walking in, it's like you're in a bookstore, you get the new books.
Now we know who takes up time of the time.
No. It'd be great to see you start to report on kind of use and satisfaction of the meeting rooms. It's great, you know, we have free conference rooms you can reserve online, and I think it's a great service for the community. I had the same thought about hours of operation. I think, in the chart you're reporting, I think total hours and hours per user, but I'd be really interested in seeing comparison of the range of hours of our city versus other cities. So, you know, because we have five libraries, I think our, our total hours stack up very well, but I'd be interested to know, are other cities staying open late in some libraries?
I don't have the statistics on how much, excuse me, how much later this day opened. We actually have two hundred and forty, two hundred and sixty hours a week of open libraries. Mountain View has sixty-four, and Sunnyvale has sixty-six, and Monique may know the hours.
That's what I'm saying, though, I don't think total hours is the only measure, I think it's range of hours.
Right, so initially, when we were looking at what hours, what hours to propose, no other public library was open past nine PM, except for the Midtown Manhattan branch, which was open till midnight. And Salt Lake City was investigating twenty-four-hour library downtown, for one, one library, not for everything. And they have not yet initiated that. It included partnerships with needing police there, social workers, medical facility, or, you know, medical staff, things like that, in addition to library staff. So there weren't public libraries that were open beyond ten PM. There are some that open earlier in the morning, nine PM being, or nine AM being the earliest that I had found.
Great, thank you. In terms of like future ideas, really interested in kind of the online learning, and maybe investigating whether libraries can have subscriptions to paid online learning courses. That might be an interesting area to explore. And then just generally, I'd like to see us, you know, we're, we're doing pretty well on teen programs, I'd like to see us continue to push to increase the amount of teens we get visiting and participating in those programs. Thanks.
Monique, do we not provide access to MOOCs through the library today?
We actually don't, well, we do provide it if the users themselves come in. They, there are a number of meeting rooms that are regularly in use by classes meeting. We have in the past offered things like Lynda.com. Use was so low that we didn't continue it, so it may be a function that there's greater interest now again, and we interest now again, and we can investigate resuming something like that or other options, what other options there are. There are, there is another one that's specifically aimed at libraries that we're investigating adding as well. We're testing it out to see how it works. So there's, Nitch Academy, I think, was another one that we were looking at.
Council member Schmidt.
Yeah, join my colleagues in thanking you for all the information provided. It's really the first time that we have a chance to have some real data from before when our libraries closed to how they're doing with all of them open. And it's really wonderful to see the explosion in eBooks, the availability and numbers, the circulation of them. Just over the last year, circulation has gone up, what, 75%? Another remarkable thing is the programs, the number and variety of programs that are being offered. And again, it's a 50% increase over the last decade in number of people participating in those programs. My colleague mentioned the meeting rooms. I think that's also, the number of them has grown tremendously, and I think their utilization, I'm not sure what it is, but when I go to the libraries, they're usually well-used. So those are all indicators of remarkable success in keeping up with the world of Palo Alto. I guess there are some numbers that comparing the last 10 years, the book collection remains basically constant with what it was 10 years ago, but circulation is down by, what, 12% over that time. Now, there's a substitution going on with eBooks over books, but it is a significant change. Maybe what's most disturbing is the number of visits compared to 10 years ago are down. And I thought that with the new libraries, the extended hours, that visits would have jumped up, but I guess the attraction of people to physical place has not grown over that time, despite the success of the programs and the meeting rooms. Maybe people are spending their time differently and spending more time, but that's a key I guess I'd ask the library commission is, you know, what, how are you assessing the long-term changes going on in our library and what does it mean for programs in the future? For, say, our comp plan that tries to look out 15 years, what do these changes mean for the role of the library? And one concrete question I have, I note, in many neighborhoods, there are now corner libraries that have become very popular, people just bringing books, leaving them, getting new books. Is that in any way sponsored by the library? Who puts those libraries out there? And is it a challenge for the library or a benefit to the library?
The little free libraries are a grassroots movement. People decide that they want to put one in their front yard. The friends of the library actually go around town, and when they see one, they will put some of their really good books in there with a sticker that says, "From the Friends of the Palo Alto Library," and talks about their book sales and, you know, the opportunity to get more books. So we don't, we definitely don't see it as competition, just as, you know, we shouldn't view bookstores as competition. They're our partners, and we look for ways to expand on that. I suppose once everybody has a little free library in their yard, then I might be a little concerned, but we have, I think we have good, you know, what you call market penetration for people in terms of library use and library cards, and, you know, we, people who are readers are going to read and find the books that they need or browse for, and we support that. So we haven't done anything formal that way, but we certainly do lead people to those locations, you know, when they're curious about them.
Yeah, actually, if you take into account the circulation of books, probably mostly popular books at the corner libraries, maybe the use of real books has increased over that last decade.
Yes, it's possible. We've been, one of the things we've worked on over the last three years is to add nonfiction materials, things for adults that will improve the average age of collections. When we, when the libraries were closed, we did a study and looked at each range of numbers, and our average ages in many sections were in the 80s and 90s. And so we have been meticulously going through and doing collection development in a very thoughtful way that will address knowledge gaps and missing bits of information, so.
Great, yeah, that's an important piece of information to circulate.
Yep.
Great, well, thank you. Look forward to another 10 years of growth, expansion, and change.
Council member Berman.
I want to pile on the kudos from my colleagues on the work that you guys have been doing in the presentation tonight. When we were renovating the libraries, we really wanted them to become more than, you know, just an area to check out or read books. We wanted them to become mini-community centers across town, and I think the breadth and depth of programs that exist now really show that that is the case, and that's fantastic. In fact, yeah, the two complaints that I get the most about our libraries are not enough parking at Main Library and they're not open enough, and those are two good problems to have. And, you know, we'll continue the walk and roll. Maps that you guys provided are a great way to try to tackle the parking problem. And, you know, I think we've moved to increase the hours that the libraries are open and continue, or can continue to look at that. I, you know, I guess, you know, understanding of the problem that it might sound easy to just tack on an hour here or an hour there, but for staffing that can create, you know, bigger challenges than it might seem. But I'm glad that we're at least analyzing the different options. One of the questions that I had, and forgive me if you covered this in your presentation, I was listening and also reading through all the material at the same time, but I noticed that for the children's library, because I can understand the fluctuations, Rinconada came online, and so it might drop a little downtown and College Terrace, but for the children's library, that dropped considerably, the checkouts and books and other items dropped considerably, although branch visits did not drop that much. Was that, were there a lot of people using children's library who would otherwise use Rinconada? I don't recall exactly how we handled that transition, but I'm getting a lot of nods that that might be the case.
I'll help you with that one. Actually, it's probably more Mitchell Park that has moved some people, because I think a lot of people in the south part of Palo Alto would come to children's as a destination, and now Mitchell Park for them is closer and also quite a destination. If you combine that with the park and the magical playground and, you know, any other activities that are going on there, that is our sense that circulation has moved that way. Rinconada has a small children's section, mostly for kids who come late at night with their parents. So, yeah, our guess is, educated guess is that it's moved more towards Mitchell Park.
And Mitchell Park has that great area in the back, the, I'm going to call it the kiddie zone, I don't know if that's actually what it's called or not.
Yeah, the kiddie zone, yeah. And by square footage, it is the same public service space as children's library is.
There you go.
So they're equal in size. However, the use, and they have many similar things, but they do have a very different vibe if you've been to each children's area.
Yeah.
And that's great, people need choices, so.
Absolutely, and it's a good asset to residents in South Palo Alto to not have to come all the way to the children's library. And then just a number that jumped out to me, for the, in the handout that you gave us, other media dropped from 541 to 15. Did we just kind of reclassify certain things, or there's no way?
Other media includes things like the watt tester for electricity, or backpacks that are for storytime, or, you know, different things like that. So those things transition in and out pretty quickly. They might last for a certain amount of time, but they're not going to maybe be as durable as other materials, and we may add them all back again.
Got it, so we just might be out of some stuff based on?
Correct, yeah, or they may be something, you know, like a number of those kits to test your wattage really never circulated. And there were a couple of other senior kits that were a project from 10 years ago, and we still have kept them, we weren't using them in the same way anymore.
Gotcha. And then one more question that I don't know who should answer, but there was something about youth librarians.
Yes.
What is that? I mean, I was, I remember being like a library advisor or helper at Jordan Middle School when I was growing up, and I loved it. But what is that? Can you tell us a little more about that?
Yeah, so librarians work, are those that are specially trained to work with youth, whether teens or children, that's the number that we currently have on staff.
Got it, so I didn't quite understand. I thought maybe those are youth that were like librarian apprentices or something.
Yeah, no, no. So these are actual degreed librarians who work directly with, at children's library, children's section, or in the teens, teen zones. We have other adult reference librarians, things like that.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Vice mayor Scharf.
Thank you, and I also will pile on the kudos, too. I think you guys are doing a great job, and I feel, strongly feel that our libraries are in really good hands with Monique and the library commission, and I really appreciate the data you've provided. So in looking at the data, I guess a couple of things jump out at me. One, it seems that we have many more visits of people that come than are checking stuff out. So I guess I'm wondering, are libraries transitioning a little bit to be places for studying, meeting? You know, you sort of indicated that a little bit, people go to Mitchell Park to make a day of it, maybe, and that kind of stuff. Am I correct in reading that, that circulation, that circulation is still obviously a really important stuff, but a meeting place may be a new mission of the library, so to speak?
Sure, yes, and, yes, and I agree. I mean, people walk in with their laptops, some spend most of the day there, you know, working on whatever they're working on. Somebody said, "Oh, I love your meeting rooms, we're working on a startup, and so we're, you know, we're meeting there as a group once a week." So, you know, we're serving a wide range of customers, and I think you're absolutely right, people are making a day of it, whether they're doing homework or whether they're doing, you know, their own business or whatever, so.
So it seems a little hard to, with Rinconada opening and the huge surge of people, you know, at Rinconada, when you look at the, when you look at those statistics, you know, attendance seems to fall on customer counts, and then you have the huge customer count, obviously, increase in Rinconada. And it's hard to tell if people are now going to Rinconada or if, and not going to the other libraries, because they used to go to the other libraries, whatever. So I'm hoping that when we do this, it'll sort of normalize and we'll get more of a sense of what's really happening over time. Do you have any sense at all how that'll play out?
The staff report to me that they're seeing more and more people going to Rinconada, so they're seeing that actually trend a little bit up. And I agree with you that I think next year, when we've, when it has kind of normalized, that we'll have a better sense of where are they using it, what library are they using at the?
So a couple of times I've been to Mitchell Park in the evening, I've noticed huge numbers of teens studying and socializing and that. I actually haven't been to Rinconada. I mean, when I say when I went to Mitchell Park, is the same thing's occurring in Rinconada, or is it really that a Mitchell Park phenomenon?
I think it's more a Mitchell Park thing, however, and we have had, you know, opportunities for teen programming and things, so we are getting more teens to come to Rinconada, but I believe that more of them are at Mitchell Park late in the evening.
So the other thing I noticed is that the one time I was there till 9:00, it seemed the place was completely full of teens at 9:00, and you had to literally throw them out.
Yes.
And so.
Yes.
So I did wonder about, I did wonder about increasing the hours, if that was, you know, what we thought, if that would get more use, if that would be a useful thing for people to be able to finish studying. I know that, I know when I talk to parents, and I know that my kids, they're not stopping studying at 9:00.
Sure.
You know, it goes well beyond that. So I guess I just wanted to get some sense, when we do look at these library hours, what if we do spend more money on library hours, what would be the most useful and efficient in terms of serving the people in the community?
Yeah, and I think we should do a, I think we should do a study, just to get a better sense of which libraries are busiest, which hours, you know, survey the neighborhoods around there, and have some community conversations around that, too, about, you know, engage them and discussing, is that, what is, what are the priorities for them as parents or teens, or, you know, understanding that better.
All right. And we know from keeping the libraries open during study time that that is really popular to have the library, and of course, the popcorn helps, too.
Yeah, doing, for the last two, three years now, we've been doing a study hall essentially during finals week, so we, if you have a student ID, you are allowed to stay till 10:00 p.m. We use just the first floor of Mitchell Park and the teen center, and we have activities to help them deal with stress, we have snacks, we have other things, you know, different principals have come by, the teens have been there, and it's been very successful, and we plan to continue, continue that for that last hour. So that may be one of the indicators, and maybe during finals week, we find out, okay, if you, if we were here every night till 10:00, what does that mean for you?
Great, thank you. Council member Wolf.
I'd also add my voice to those saying, thank you very much for the work that you're doing, Monique and the rest of the library staff and the commission. I was liaison last year to the library advisory commission, and it was clear then, and it's clear based on this study session, this report, that as others have said, our libraries are in good hands, so thank you very much, and please keep up the good work. One thing I want to actually ask about, on slide 14, you talked about the collection of foreign language materials growing, and I just had two kind of follow-up questions. What are the most popular languages that are being checked out and being utilized currently, and what are the language areas for our foreign language collections which you're seeing the most demand for that's currently lacking that you're targeting to increase? I don't know if you have that in data, or if you have it in anecdotal?
June's like shaking her head, no, I don't know.
Or what can we do to get more data?
I can get more data, and I will do that. Our, you know, we do bilingual storytimes in Mandarin, Cantonese, Spanish, Russian. We've done them in Hindi, and, did I say Spanish? So maybe one or two other languages. So we concentrate on building up the Chinese, Korean, Spanish, Russian, and videos in Farsi are extremely popular. We never seem to be able to handle that demand, and as you can imagine, there's a limited supply of what might be available, but, and so we, you know, one of the things that we really do is look at the changing demographics of our community. So I can get you actual numbers, and I will do that, but for us, the challenge is working with the vendors to track down durable, long-lasting books, because oftentimes, books in foreign languages published in other countries are not intended to be as long-lasting, they're more ephemeral. So we are looking for that. We have magazines and newspapers from all around the world in all of their original languages every day, available on press display, so you could read Der Zeit and see what's going on in Germany, and read items in Chinese, and we will be adding a Chinese language. going on in Germany, and read items in Chinese, and we will be adding a Chinese-language platform for news and information coming up, so.
Great, thank you.
So I just had a few follow-up comments and questions. First, I want to support Councilmember DuBois's encouragement to look at the online learning as an emerging direction. And then I also, well, I just want to say, when Councilmember Berman was talking about lack of parking spaces, or shortage of parking spaces at Rinconada, I was confused at first because I never have a parking problem there, because I ride my bike, and then I realized he was talking about cars. So on that vein, I just want to say what a great thing this Walk and Roll is, which, for those who haven't seen it, is bike and pedestrian routes to the libraries that we have now well-established, and it points to an effort that I think the Commission and Monique have been involved in, which is how the libraries become more integrated with the rest of the community, the rest of the department functions, really when we look at the expanded role of the libraries, these are community services that are being performed there. And I wanted to follow up on two particular parts of that. I saw in the presentation that Mitchell was listed as not having 3D printing for environmental reasons, and I didn't know what those might be.
It's a, it's a, it's a LEED-certified building, and so there were concerns about the emissions from the existing 3D printer, and perhaps new ones would be okay. And Monique will say more.
Yeah, right. So it all of a sudden occurred to me, we had these rooms for copy machines, right, paper copy machines, that have to be separately vented to the outside for points on LEED silver, or LEED platinum. And then I thought, well, these, this is melting plastic, is there an issue with this? And it turned out, yes, there could be an issue. Not that, at this point, that there is LEED recertification, so we might not need to do it, and we held a community conversation. We actually invited people to both Rinconada and Mitchell Park libraries to talk about, like, what do you, what do you think about the future of technology, and this kind of thing? And it was very interesting, the light, the librarians who hosted this said, most people really didn't care, they would just like to see the 3D printing. So we are rolling them out. The problem we're having is the plastic keeps clogging up, and we can't get it to come through. So we're working on the technology itself. There are available signups through our events calendar on the website. I don't think that there's anything available until December. Doug Hagan tried, you tried, right? So we're gonna keep adding.
So what I was hoping is that we would be looking at expanding to Mitchell, and if it needs separate venting like we do for copiers, I don't think that's a real big deal.
Well, so we're getting it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, at Mitchell, you're planning?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, we're getting it. We're just trying to work out the kinks of, how do we keep it from not extruding and...
So the other thing that I would love to see is even stronger collaboration than I'm aware of between the Mitchell Teen Center in the community center space, and the Teen Center in the library. I appreciate that teens are not doing identical things there in those two areas, but it just seems that that's an opportunity to explore greater collaboration between those two facilities in the same library-community center complex. So I'll just leave it as, that as something that I hope there's a possibility, and it goes to this further collaboration between Community Service Department and the libraries. So on that note, I'd just like to say on behalf of what I've heard from everyone, keep up the fantastic work. We really appreciate what the Commission's doing, and the library staff, and it's really exciting after the community investment that occurred in the rebuilding of the libraries, and real question about what would be the transformation of the libraries? Well, the answer is, it just continues to transform, and that's fantastic. So thank you very much. And on, oh, yes.
And just one final thing for me. We want to thank Monique and her staff very much for all the wonderful things that they do. So, thank you.
Great. So we'll take just a moment to let the commissioners move, and you are welcome to stay as long as you like this evening, to enjoy the rest of our meeting.
With the Library Commission up there, we're gonna go, moving on now to several very, very large items. It's gonna take us through the evening. They were in a closed session with the city, dealing with, city attorney dealing with existing litigation for the government code, Alain Stats versus the City of Palo Alto. And coming up now is special orders of the day, the appointments of two candidates for the Planning and Transportation Commission for terms ending December 15th, 2020, and one candidate to the Planning and Transportation Commission for an unexpired term ending December 15th, 2018. We'll have additions and deletions and changes, and then, of course, the city manager comments, which is always interesting, and then oral communications, which can be just as interesting as well. Then we'll get on to the consent calendar, where we have several items tonight. We have about six items in any time these can be voted on in one motion and removed from the calendar by, it'll take three council members. One is an adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager, who is designated to approve a base contract for sales and purchase of a natural gas with sequent energy management LP, and a portion of the city natural gas requirement under specified terms and conditions during the calendar years 2016 through 2022. The other is adoption of a resolution providing the standard form natural gas purchase and sales agreement with special terms and conditions. It's the standard form master agreement. We also have an approval of a two-year professional services contract with Mott McDonald Group for rail program management services to allow multiple specific task orders with a total not to exceed $1,614,763. Another one is the item is to approve and authorize the city manager to execute contracts with Salas O'Brien in the amount not to exceed $217,800 for design services for the municipal center, mechanical, electrical, and lighting improvements, and zero-waste office renovation capital improvement project. Another item is the adoption of a resolution amending and restating administrative penalty schedule and city penalty schedules for certain violations of the Palo Alto Municipal Code and the California vehicle established by Resolution Number 9554. And the final one of the consent calendar items is the appointment of the Utilities General Manager, Director of Utilities Assistant City Manager, and the approval of the amendment to the employment agreement, and approval of a recommended staffing reorganization in the city manager's office and utilities department. And I'm Vince Larkin, and I did mention the huge items that we have, items number, we have an action item, it's a public hearing, item number 10. Item number 11 is another public hearing. Item number 12 is a review and options for the citywide bike share system, and we finish with another public hearing. So we have action items and public hearings tonight. It's scheduled to go through till 11:00, but I think it'll be longer than that on this special night. It's a busy night politically. We also have the debate between the vice presidential nominees in Virginia, between the vice presidential nominee for the Democrats, Mr. Kane, and the vice presidential nominee for the Republicans, Mr. Pence. So I don't know which is more exciting, the vice presidential debate, or the Palo Alto City Council. You can decide. It's about 10 minutes after 7:00, and I'm Vince Larkin, this is live coverage. And of course, we also have a baseball game tonight between the Birds. It's baseball for the Birds between the Blue Jays and the Orioles. The last time I heard, it's the wild game, wildcard game in the American League. The Blue Jays were winning 1 to 0 in Toronto, but tomorrow night, of course, everyone's excited because the Giants got the wild card, and they're playing the Mets tomorrow night, 5:00 Pacific Time in New York. So that's exciting. So a busy, busy weekend. Of course, in college football as well, with Stanford having a tough time playing Washington on Friday, that was on KZSU, and that was a tough game. But a lot going on in campus. I know the soccer team, Stanford played Cal.
Councilmembers, we are now on to item number three, which is appointment of candidates to the Planning and Transportation Commission. The way we have this set up is that the first ballot is for selecting two candidates for the term ending December 15th, 2020, and after we have selected those two, we will do another balloting for the one term that is open through December 15th, 2018. So you're just voting for two at this time, and we can go forward and put those up on the, I think we've, we're back. While the clerk is totaling those, we have any agenda changes, additions, or deletions, and I don't believe we have any. And so we can move on to city manager comments. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, first of all, just a report on this weekend's Bike Palo Alto and the Bike and Roll Expo, and want to put out some thank yous to everybody. The Seventh Annual Bike Palo Alto on Sunday drew more than 800 people of all ages to explore one of three highlighted routes for getting around Palo Alto by bike without getting in their cars, with an increase in participation of 14% over last year. This year, the downtown Menlo Park route was the favorite, with 46% of riders heading to the Bike and Roll Expo at City Hall, while 34% chose the Monroe Park-Los Altos route, and 20% headed to the Baylands Midtown route. More than 70 volunteers stepped forward to assist participants at El Carmelo School, where the event started, and a treat stops along each route. We, our staff estimates CO2 savings for the estimated average of five miles ridden per participant as 2.2 tons for the afternoon saved, and with the potential added savings from frequent rider cards, which were handed out to encourage folks to keep riding, to community businesses, libraries, and other destinations, the potential of lowering emissions by eight and a half tons of CO2 without adding demand for parking spaces at local destinations to keep everybody riding. We have more than 200 people attend the expo on the plaza to test out electric bikes, automated skateboards, scooters, cargo bikes, and more low-carbon options. Our city's transportation division tested out parking-protected bikeways along Bryant Street between University and Forest. One of the more popular stations involved tricking out your bike to look like a mobile piece of artwork, and there were lots of bike riders and families, of course, who started the day at El Carmelo School and headed downtown. So a lot of thanks to our transportation and planning staff, community services, and Public Works employees, but a special thanks to community volunteers, Sandra Slater, Kathy Durham, and Robin Doobie. So it was a great day, lots of fun. I hope the mayor, who was helping spearhead the expo, was pleased with the outcome. I rode four different electric bikes myself, and new version of the revolution will not be televised, but e-bikes are here. Some of you might have heard some concerns about bike security at our Caltrain stations, and I did want to share in response to hearing from council members that Caltrain is working on a system-wide bike parking management plan. The plan is funded through a Caltrans planning, Caltrans planning grant, and is focused on identifying the kinds of bike parking that will best suit our Caltrain riders' needs. The study will be completed in the first quarter of 2017. Our transportation staff are serving on the Technical Advisory Committee for this study, and we intend to incorporate the recommendations into our city strategy to add secure bicycle parking throughout Palo Alto. In the meantime, our staff will be looking for immediate opportunities to add secure bicycle parking throughout the city, and at this time, people wanting tips really on how to really personally secure your bikes can go to the city's website, to our Safe Routes to School page, but we'll be moving a link up onto our homepage to address that. As a result of ongoing conflicts between some bicyclists and pedestrians along the Bull Path, the Bull Park path, our transportation staff will be meeting with a group of Barren Park residents and path users this Wednesday to begin development of a concept plan for safety improvements along the path. The group will also identify opportunities to immediately add new signing and striping along the path to improve safety and operations. I think the council has heard a number of comments from folks in the community there. These types of path user conflicts are becoming more common in our country, as more shared-use paths are constructed and more people begin to bike and walk. So we will work with our community to identify good ideas from trails around the nation to develop both the immediate and long-term safety improvements along Bull Park. And speaking of Bull Park and the Barren Park neighborhood, but our city as a whole, I did want to share with anybody who has not heard it yet, the sad news that our beloved Palo Alto donkey, minor 49er, died at the age of 32 on Wednesday, September 28th, after having respiratory and other health problems. Miners, longtime companion, of course, Palo Alto Perry, who's gained fame by traveling around the city in another form, visiting one location after another, certainly still with us, but has to be saddened by the loss of his companion. Would point out that Sue Drayman at The Weekly has written a really nice story about it, so folks may want to get online and take a look at that. And then, lastly, I just wanted to share an update on our golf course. Construction is full, in full swing, as you can see out here at the golf course. Our contractors completed approximately two-thirds. Don't we have sound, guys?
Is that a new golf cart?
Yeah. Come on, get the sound. Anyway, 200,000 cubic yards of soil from the large stockpile out onto the golf course. It's already been transformed from a nearly flat surface into rolling terrain of mounds and valleys, which provide a far more interesting and challenging course for golfers. It will not look like this, folks, when it's done. Introduction of native plants in wetland areas will create enhanced habitat for local wildlife and will allow the golf course to blend more seamlessly into the surrounding baylands. The rough grading work should be completed by mid-October, to be followed by fine grading, installation of underground utilities and irrigation, and planning for the opening of the new Baylands Golf Links in the fall of 2017. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Does the city clerk have some results?
I do. Councilmember Berman voting for Michelle Kraus and Reshma Singh. Mayor Burt voting for Presmet Guardius and Ed Lowing. Councilmember DuBois voting for Ed Lowing and Doria Suma. Councilmember Phil Seth voting for Ed Lowing and Doria Suma. Councilmember Holman voting for Ed Lowing and Doria Suma. Councilmember Niss voting for Presmet Guardius and Michelle Kraus. Vice Mayor Scharf voting for Michelle Kraus and Reshma Singh. Councilmember Schmidt voting for Ed Lowing and Doria Suma. Councilmember Wolbach voting for Michelle Kraus and Reshma Singh. Ed Lowing has been appointed to the Planning and Transportation with five votes. We will need to do... We will need to do a second round for the second full term.
Thank you. And while we're taking up that matter, I wanted to just share with everyone that the city manager was away last week for the International City Management Association Conference, where he was the recipient of the organization's award for career excellence at their annual meeting, which is a very esteemed award in what is the International Association of City Management. And I just want to acknowledge, you know, we tend to take for granted those who we have serving us locally, but outside of our community, they take a step back and fully appreciate how privileged we are to have someone of Jim's caliber serving our community. And I'd like to represent the award to you, Jim. I have it here. It's been stolen from your office. So...
All right. and the effectiveness of local elected officials. And I just want to say that the eight years I've been here with the council, I'm sure, has enabled me to do that. You all have made that very easy to do, that sort of work. It's really a testimony to the quality of the elected representatives of this city in particular. I've had the honor to work with folks in other communities, but the quality of city council members, and I've worked with a whole bunch already just in eight years, has been really very, very high level and high caliber. So I will share this award with you. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have results?
We have to vote again. You got a second one?
Oh. So while the clerk is tabulating those, we will begin oral communications. I have one speaker card. If anyone else wishes to speak on an item not otherwise on the agenda, please bring a card forward. So our speaker is David of Crescent Park. Welcome.
Thank you. This is the first time I've done this, so forgive me if I make some mistakes. I wanted to... I'm David. I live in Crescent Park. I just wanted to talk briefly about an issue that's come up on the neighborhood mailing list of Airbnbs of single-family homes. As background, we own and occupy our single-family home in Crescent Park. And I know there's concern about this. In particular, there's talk on the neighborhood mailing list of 14 separate individuals renting beds on Airbnb of a three-bed house on Lincoln. And there may be others speaking or planning to speak here tonight about this, which is why I wanted to talk as well. You know, people are rightly concerned about parking and noise and unknown people in the neighborhood. And I'd be concerned about these issues too, although they don't directly affect us on Addison. But I want to make sure that if there's any action that we're thinking of taking that rightfully address the problems of overcrowding and parking, that we don't accidentally also hurt Palo Alto families who are increasingly relying on Airbnb to get by. In our case, to supplement our family's income and to allow us to stay part of this community, we sometimes rent out our home to family and corporate groups on Airbnb, often when we're out of town or on vacation. We have a large six-bed family house with the mortgage and property tax to match. And the people we rent to are typically cohesive groups, family or corporate groups, often with small kids coming for a short visit, who want to stay together in a large, family-oriented home in a great residential neighborhood, rather than in a sort of more impersonal small hotel rooms in a commercial district. Examples that we've rented to are, you know, families coming for Stanford graduation, wedding, and sports events. Palo Alto residents coming and bringing extended family and friends for a celebration or a vacation, or in one case, a funeral. Family groups coming with someone attending a conference or volunteering or training at Stanford. Classmates coming in for reunions. And then also, local companies bringing in employees from other offices for bonding and training. On parking, most of our groups have one or two rental cars, so they park in our driveway or directly in front of our house. And sometimes, actually, they have no cars at all and just rely on Uber or walking. On noise, our groups really have not much difference to our noise. If anything, they're quieter than our kids. And on unknown people, these are cohesive groups traveling together, not a bunch of individuals living in... Obviously, we screen them very carefully because they're living in our home. We have probably the greatest interest in making sure that we know who they are and that we check them out. And we take about less than half of anyone who even requests. And obviously, finally, we're very respectful of our neighbors, and so far, there haven't been any issues. So on the concerns, if you hear about the Lincoln House, it seems to me that the issue is not Airbnb or short-term rentals, per se, but it seems it's more about overcrowding and parking. You know, I don't think it's a short-term rental issue. The owner of this Lincoln House has raised the minimum rental to 30 days, and thus actually avoiding the 14% transient occupancy tax that the city would otherwise collect. And that doesn't seem to be solving the problems. I don't think it's a total number of people issue either. I think it depends on the size of the house. I think the issue, we've got four or five people staying in each room of a three-bedroom house, and each having their own car. That is big of an issue. And I don't think it's really an unknown people issue either. Palo Alto is an international and a college town that is, you know, full of people who've come here from somewhere else to live and work. So in summary, if I think there's going to be any regulation, as we look at, if council looks at this, it should focus on parking and overcrowding, but not on short-term rentals or large groups, per se. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Azadeh. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Azadeh Malik, and I live next door to Gordon Stewart, the owner of 1245 Lincoln Avenue. Up until today, Gordon left all of us with the impression that he was going forward with his plan of renting his three-bedroom house to 14 separate individuals. Today, for the first time, he has reached out to some members of our community and expressed remorse. In fact, he is here today to speak. None of this would have happened if we did not have a forum for the community to voice their concern, and was it not for the great community that we have? It shows how strong we can all be if we have the backing of one another. This is what neighborhoods and communities should all be about. Having said that, the problem we have with greedy actors seeking to take advantage of Airbnb is not over. We're facing predators looking for single-family homeowners in our desirable neighborhoods and homeowners who are willing to let them do so. As one cord vest said, "Our social fabric is best preserved if we enforce our municipal codes that embody the expectations of the residents." To allow one person to escape obligations under our municipal ordinance upsets the expectation of all other parties governed by that instrument. The homes in question are in R1 single-family residential zoning. Currently, we define family as follows. An individual or group of persons living together who constitute a bona fide, single-housekeeping unit in a dwelling unit. Any one of common intelligence knows that finding 14 people on Airbnb, each at different times and at different terms, who come to a three-bedroom, two-bathroom house to simply rent a place to sleep, who are not a static group of persons, but rather an ever-changing array of individuals who may not even know each other by name, cannot possibly be meant to constitute a bona fide, single-housekeeping unit. If we allow people like this, who are not even members of our community, to seek membership into our communities by serial renting of rooms and set up four to six beds in each room, we're setting ourselves up for the destruction of single-family character of our neighborhoods. We requested the city of Palo Alto either prevent the commercializing of single-family homes by enforcing its current ordinances in place, or if the current ordinances are inadequate, we asked that the city take steps and make the changes necessary to deal with this abusive behavior currently present throughout our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Farah Maz.
Good evening. Dear council members, my name is Farah Maz Bahmani, and I live next door to 1245 Lincoln. Purchasing a house in Palo Alto was for long a distant dream for my wife and I, but we worked hard to make it happen because we wanted the best for our future children, the best school district, and the best neighbors in one of the best cities in the world. Since we moved here four years ago, we have enjoyed living side by side with our neighbors and enjoyed every minute of it. We bonded with every family that came and lived next to us so much that when their lease was up and they had to leave, it was difficult for us and for our now-three-year-old daughter to realize that it was time to say goodbye. In fact, we are still friends with all the previous tenants Gordon leased his house to since we moved in next door. Bonds like that formed because the families were there for at least a year-long term. We felt safe letting our daughter play with their kids and yell out from our backyard into their backyard, asking their kids to come over and play. Our sense of stability, however, shattered when we realized that 14 others were going to live in a three-bedroom house next to us, a group subject to constant change. 14 adults every month, potentially 168 different individuals in a year, living right across the fence from us. We are supposed to be able to enjoy the peace and the quiet of our house, but how can we when we can no longer even let our daughter play outside, knowing that she'll be exposed to all those individuals who don't even know each other? What was even more shocking is that the house would be a commercial venture. Nathan and his team would make at least $1,000 a month from each tenant. That is at least $14,000 a month from a three-bedroom house. Even in the great neighborhood we live in, everybody knows $14,000 is an outrageous amount of rent to pay for a three-bedroom. Over time, this pattern of commercializing homes will prevent future families from being able to afford renting and living in our great city. I ask the city to look into these matters, enhance their enforcement tools, and stop the abusive practices exhibited on Airbnb that lead to the detrimental effects on our communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we won't be accepting any more speaker cards on oral communications. We have four more cards. But let's take a moment, and I think the clerk may have the latest polling on the Planning and Transportation Committee.
Mayor Burt, I do. Councilmember Berman voting for Reshma Singh. Mayor Burt voting for Presmet Guardias. Councilmember DuBois voting for Doria Suma. Councilmember Philseth voting for Doria Suma. Councilmember Holman voting for Doria Suma. Councilmember Niss voting for Doria Suma. Vice Mayor Scharf voting for Presmet Guardias. Councilmember Schmidt voting for Doria Suma. And Councilmember Wolbach voting for Reshma Singh. Doria Suma, with five votes, is appointed to the second full term for the Planning and Transportation Commission. We'll now do the unfinished term, unexpired term.
Thank you. And our next speaker is George Billman. Sorry? Welcome.
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the council. I am also a resident of Palo Alto for over 20 years. We've enjoyed living in Crescent Park. I live at the corner of University and Lincoln, an immediate next-door neighbor to Gordon's house. We share a long, common fence. The fence is less than chin-high or about, affording a view into our yard and their yard. If I stand at my barbecue, I can listen to conversations. They can listen to my family's conversations. And when you're with a neighbor of longstanding that you know well and that you have a bond with, that doesn't bother you. But imagine the difference now I'm facing. We're 14 people continually changing right over the fence, looking into my yard, seeing my three daughters, seeing the possessions in our house, because I have lots of windows. I'm standing at my barbecue. I'm having business conversations. I don't know who's over the fence because it's changing all the time. I don't know anything about their background. I feel this scheme would damage my privacy and my calm that I think is my right to enjoy. And I don't think that it is something that is, that comports with the idea of a single-family neighborhood. Now Crescent Park has its Addison School District. It's a very strong... We've really enjoyed the strong community in that neighborhood. This forms the foundation of the grammar schools on up into Jordan and Pali. Right? Those schools are based on long-term resident families that join the PTA, that contribute to the bake sales and to the educational fundraising, that participate in city council. I think it's very unlikely that 14 people that turn over on a monthly basis are going to add that sort of keel and support to the community. So I think that we really need to consider the long-term effects, as was earlier portrayed. Someone that can spend $14,000 a month from a house like this, they're going to have the cash flow to go find other houses. Do we want to see our neighborhoods progressively strip-mined for profit, driving out families that could no longer afford to live there? Or do we want to preserve our community, insist on bona fide, single-family residents that become part of the community and support the community, and preserve the privacy and comfort of their neighbors? I think this is reaching a point where I can understand the other gentleman's defense of occasional Airbnb, but when you industrialize this to a scale of 14 people, four to six per bedroom, it's an entirely different character. And I think that I urge the council to consider constraining this sort of opportunism. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is George.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Jörg Rothenberg. I live on Lincoln Avenue, right across from the house we're talking about. Everybody here has spoken so eloquently already. I don't have any prepared remarks, but I want to kind of say that about seven years ago, my wife and I packed our bags in San Francisco, where we lived in a very nice neighborhood, and we moved here to Palo Alto to seek exactly what George had just talked about, this kind of close neighborhood environment where people kind of are friendly with each other, where the kids can play out in the street, where it's safe, and where it's nice. And now, seven years later, actually, we kind of see... It is a difficult time. I mean, you can see lots of different people buying houses for profit, quite frankly, right? Kind of just trying to get their foot into the market. You can see a lot of people turning over and so on. But I mean, we have experienced coming here. We've experienced this close-knit community. We've experienced the schools that we have looked for, and we were very happy with that. What I find dangerous is if we kind of use a residential neighborhood for commercial gain, and we kind of start building hotels, because that's what it really is, right? I mean, if we start building hotels in residential neighborhoods, I don't think it's good. And today, we're already fighting with the parking problem. I mean, it used to be very quiet seven years ago, and suddenly, we've got cars kind of stacked up all over our street. And everybody... I mean, there are a lot of things that we can complain about, and we can do something about, and so on. But I think we really have to look at the causes, right? Why is that happening? And I think in a residential neighborhood, we want to have residential families. That's why we left our home and moved here to experience that. And I would also ask the council to please consider that in their... And I think in a residential neighborhood, we want to have residential families. That's why we left our home and moved here to experience that. And I would also ask the council to please consider that in their proceedings. And I also want to point out, we're, so to speak, the tip of the iceberg. We're speaking here; we're limited right now in saying more, but we can, there are a lot of more people who have similar ideas about that than we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Herb Borack, or do we have a count ready?
I do, and rather than go through all, each of the individuals, everybody voted Presmet Guardias.
Okay. So we have three planning commissioners. Welcome to the new commissioners, and we certainly had an outstanding candidate pool. We had 16 candidates, and I think it was a very strong consensus of the council that we really valued the candidates who applied and hoped that they will participate in either future applications for the commission or other boards, commissions, or other ad hoc ways to serve the community, because we thought it was really an exceptional candidate pool. All right. Our next speaker is Herb Borack, to be followed, pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry. Our final speaker on oral communications is Gordon Stewart. Welcome.
Well, thanks for having me here. I am the owner of 1245 Lincoln. Much has been said on CPNA, as well as the Daily Post, so people think they know me, but a lot has been said that really is not true, and I'd like to correct some of that, get the chance here to do that. Many of my neighbors here are behind me, which is kind of odd, having my back to them, but anyway. So I grew up in the city, went to junior high and high school here. My mother and I moved here in 1965, and I've been the one maintaining this house since I, the age of 15. So I care about this house; I care about the neighborhood; I care about Crescent Park and Palo Alto. This is truly my home here. I do nothing to destroy the house, the neighborhood, et cetera. So, and then, you know, I do rent it out. I am retired. I no longer have a Silicon Valley-type salary. This is part of what we live on, and it's very important for me to do this. What ended up happening was, somehow there's a downturn in the rental, the number of people interested in renting. And I think my lease kept shifting later and later in the year, and I hit this kind of pit here. And, you know, I said, okay, are there other options? So I tried this, and I thought everything was legal. I truly did. I have no intention of breaking any city ordinance. Not, my intention still isn't. So at this point, I do have a lease, and I'm actually trying to get out of it. I would, you know, have always preferred to have a single-family there. This wasn't, did not appear to be possible. A number of neighbors have offered to help me find somebody, and anyway, I've just decided with all the turmoil that has been created around this, I'd rather have it and have me not be a part of it. Anyways, I say I'm trying to work my way out of it. So, I mean, bottom line is, I'm in a situation, I'm trying to get out of that; I'm trying to find somebody new, and all of you and everyone behind me, I'm putting it out there, I do need a family to run from, and so if anybody has leads, I'll be around this evening. It's very important to me, so thanks for listening.
Thank you. So our next item is approval of minutes. We have minutes from the meeting of September 19, 2016. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Councilmember DuBois, second by Councilmember Schmidt. Please vote on the board. And that passes 9-0. So we now move on to the consent calendar. And we have one speaker on item number seven, Herb Borack. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Burr. This is the item for a contract with Mott McDonald Group, formerly Hatch Mott McDonald, for rail management program services. I believe this is the wrong contractor to receive a contract from the city for rail matters. I think it's the wrong agency, that is Palo Alto, to be paying for some of the services indicated here on grade separations, and I think it's the wrong time to be doing it. Hatch Mott McDonald is one of the funders, as a contributor, to Proposition 1A that established the High-Speed Rail Authority and its current program that the city opposes. In exchange for its donation, it became one of the contractors for High-Speed Rail and received contracts many times over the amount that it contributed to the campaign. And although, under the conflict of interest laws, if it waits a period of time, it's not technically in violation of that law, but practically, anyone who has been in the position, as they have, of essentially being an agent of the High-Speed Rail Authority can't suddenly, you know, change what it is doing. In effect, on such things as environmental review, it already starts with a bias, and it's the wrong bias. It can't be objective in working for the city of Palo Alto. Palo Alto is also the wrong agency to be funding these things. It should be the agencies that are sponsors of the project, the Caltrain and the High-Speed Rail Authority. And since the High-Speed Rail Authority EIR process is still ongoing, bringing up the grade separations as a mitigation is the appropriate thing, and it's only after that that we determine who would be funding it. Also, to the extent that grade separations increases the ability to increase more office development in Palo Alto, it should be those who benefit from that development who should be paying for it. Finally, it's the wrong time. That is, we are about to adopt a comprehensive plan next year, and that requires an integrated set of policies and programs on all the elements of the plan, including the transportation as it relates to development. And until we have an internally consistent set of elements for a comprehensive plan, only then can we decide what kind of programs we want for grade separations and how they would be funded. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
I'd move to pull item number nine.
I support that.
I believe, yeah.
Okay. And Councilmember Philseth. So we have three members who are moving to have item nine polled, so item nine will be polled. In anticipation of this potential, we had looked at upcoming agendas, and we can have a brief agendizing of this item for tonight. And I think if we have the concurrence of the council, the purpose of that would be merely to allow council members to identify for the staff any areas that they'd like to have staff be prepared to discuss in greater depth when it returns for a full agenda item. And I think Mr. City Manager, was November 7 the first available date?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. November 7.
So that would be the date that we'd have the full discussion on the item. Does that seem acceptable?
Sure.
Okay. And so on that note, we can vote on consent calendar items 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9A. Oh, yeah. Is that correct?
Yes, I just, for anybody listening, I just wanted to make note, because I guess we'll get to this later, but I know there was an email to council earlier in the week about, or last week, I guess, about things that would be included that staff has identified. Will those be discussed later as well?
Let's address that at the time we discuss.
That's fine. I just want to make sure they weren't lost. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Please vote on the board. Oh, I'm sorry, we do. We need a motion for items approval of 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9A.
Second.
Who was first? Motion by Councilmember Niss, second by Councilmember Berman. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. So now, we will move to rescheduled item number nine. And this item is...
What are you doing, Sid? That's what the attorney said.
Title: Adoption of a Resolution Amending and Restating the Administrative Penalty Schedule and Civil Penalty Schedule for Certain Violations of the Palo Alto Municipal Code and the California Vehicle Code Established by Resolution Number 9554. City Attorney Stump.
Thank you. So just briefly, this item is generated on an annual basis. It's really an administrative update, and this year, the staff identified two areas where they would like to add an administrative penalty. Those are both described in your staff report with respect to TDM programs and violations of PC ordinances. In the time since the item was drafted, we've had further conversations as a staff and would like to refine one or both of those, and then even as recently as today, there were some additional, very minor administrative cleanup items that did surface amongst our staff. So we will be bringing forward some refinements with respect to those two, and then we understand that the council members very well may wish to give us some direction on those items or other items that you would like us to address when the item returns on November 7.
Mr. Mayor, I would just add, I think, following on your lead here, this isn't really meant to be a deep dive and an exhaustive discussion. It's just to identify some of the issues and get some general direction.
Thank you. All right. So we can, because we're going to have this abbreviated, we can have questions and comments together. If any members of the public wish to submit a speaker card, please do so at this time. And who would like to go first? Councilmember Holman, were you trying to hit your light? Okay, it didn't flash for me, but go right ahead.
Okay, sorry. I'll be quick, as a flash. So I appreciate the comments made by the City Attorney Stump. It doesn't give the public a description of what the things are that will be coming back, that staff has identified. I just wondered if that might be a prudent thing to do?
So just to preview, then, what you'll see from us on the PC ordinance violation amount, our thoughts were to provide that an opportunity to cure a period would be discretionary for staff to allow that in a case where coming into compliance requires actions of a third party, and sometimes needed reasonably to do that. But to allow the staff to impose a penalty more quickly than that in cases where the owner has the ability to cure the violation right away. We also wanted to make clear that there would be a graduated penalty amount that would increase if there was not compliance after a period of time. We also wanted to elicit from council, not a specific recommendation from staff on this, whether the proposed fine amount in the current staff report is noted to increase to double to $2,000 is, in fact, the right fine amount from the council's perspective.
Thank you for that. And if I might add to that, and, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you're looking for motions, if you're just looking for council members to put out to staff what they want to have come back.
Not motions tonight. I think what we can do is individual council members can make their comments; others can simply concur or speak. But I think the most efficient thing would be if a preceding council member has raised an issue, then we can simply say, I also would like to discuss that. But frankly, this is just a heads-up to staff, so even if it's just an individual council member at the subsequent November 7 hearing will be, have the prerogative to raise those issues either way. So it's not, it doesn't, whatever we bring up tonight, staff is not limited, or our discussion on November 7 is not limited to the items that we bring up or have more than one council member discuss. It's just to give the staff a sense of the things we want to know more about or discuss.
Okay, great. So with that, I will, I will go through these quickly, but I would like also address, when the staff comes back, is what about repeat offenses? So in other words, what about if something's cured, and then two weeks later, it goes out of compliance again? So repeat offenses, also can, because of the length of time the situation, the noncompliance has endured, can, and I'm not supposing one way or the other, can Edgewood Plaza grocery be dealt with separately from the other PC regulations? Just a question I have. Then also, 1649080 and 090 have to do with maintenance of downtown historic structure and demolition of downtown historic structure. The lack of maintenance, the penalty for not maintaining is all of $500, and the demolition of a downtown historic structure is $1,000. It's, you know, hardly consistent with what today's dollar values are. And the other thing I noticed that only is for downtown historic structures and not other places in the city. It seems like we ought to be mindful of our CLG status and responsibilities. The other thing I would bring up just quickly are 8.04020, and some of these are not exactly clear what they're intended to be, so maybe what could come back is also clarification of what the intention is. 8.04080, 010, 050, and 070. And those all have to do with tree care, and it's not clear what the, so these are called permit-required tree work, interference of the tree enforcement, protected trees, and care of protected trees. So I'm presuming 050, when it says protected trees, does that mean to remove a protected tree without a permit? That penalty is $500. Again, not consistent with today's dollar values. I'm sure staff can come back with what would be a reasonable way to evaluate those reasonable penalties, whether it's an inch of diameter, an inch of foot, or, I mean, a dollar amount per foot, or, you know, life of a tree and how long it takes to get to be the size, whatever, whatever's commensurate with what some other communities do. So those are my comments.
Okay. Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the two that are identified are the PC and Transportation Demand Management, and I would emphasize the second one as much as the first. They are both extremely important for the long run and need addressing clarity.
Vice Mayor Scharf.
Just briefly, I think there may be things on here that we no longer need, like no trespassing in the city landfill. We don't have a city landfill anymore. So I was just thinking, if there's stuff that could be cleaned up while we do, it'd be a good opportunity. There's a couple of things, I actually have no idea what they are, so if someone wants to just briefly look through this and see if there are things we don't need anymore. Thanks.
Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, I concur with everybody, particularly the cleanup, and it might be worth touching on the taxi items versus Uber. Be interested to know, we have several taxi fees.
All right. I see no more comments, and if that's the case, we can continue this item to date certain of November 7. Thank you all. So our next item is a public hearing regarding the adoption of nine ordinances, which are the city's adoption of California Building Code updates, local amendments, and other related updates. And I'm not going to read off the long list of all... And I'm not going to read off the long list of all the chapters, but we will, they're printed in our agenda and they're available at the back of the room. So welcome Director Pernajad, and take over.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and Honorable Counsel. It's a pleasure to be here tonight with you. Again, Peter Pernajad, Development Services Director, here with the Development Services Department, a large subsection of which I'll introduce. The item before you tonight is our state mandated building codes. Every three years, if you remember, it seems like a blink of the eye, I was here three years ago doing this exact same thing. The building codes is a compilation of many different sections of Title 24. And as many cities do, we make local amendments to those codes to reflect the character and the different nuances of the city of Palo Alto that we've carried on from year to year as well as learning from different construction, other mishaps that other cities have had, and absorbing them into the local amendments. And so what you have is just about a year's worth of work on our end to compile notes and learnings from various sections of the code and disciplines and consolidating them into one staff report that's before you to go over all the local amendments. So what I've compiled today is a very quick overview. I'm leaning heavily on the fact that all the materials are in the staff report. And what I've asked my staff to do is compile a list of the most pertinent sections of the code that we think might be of interest. We will go over those briefly. And if you have any questions, we have slides that are embedded in this longer PowerPoint presentation, which we're prepared to get into if need be. But the PowerPoint is generally an overview of the sections that we feel are the most, of the most interest. So if I may introduce my staff that's here to support the various sections of the code. To my right is George Hoyt, our Chief Building Official. In the crowd, but behind me is Yvonne Ballish, our Assistant Chief Building Official, Melanie Jacobson, our Green Building Coordinator/Contractor, and then James Henrickson was supposed to be here today, but he had a family emergency. And in his place, Gio Blackshire and Carl Schneider are here to discuss the fire code. So with that, if I may start again, and the, I don't, could you pass that keyboard? Ah, perfect. The recommended motion is here before you. I believe the city attorney would recommend that you only read the first two lines. So I think, I don't ask that you read the entire dissertation. But if you're looking for a dissertation, I've got a great one for you. All right. So with that, the local code and local amendments is a state mandated requirement every three years. The 2016 California Building Standards Code is before you with the local amendments. And we're required by state law to adopt it within 180 days from July 1. So at best, we're hoping that, to adopt the codes at their bare basic, but we would really hope that you would adopt them with the local amendments. So with that, I'm going to pass the mic on to Yvonne Ballish, our Assistant Chief Building Official, to discuss the first section, of which we have four to discuss, and will be very brief and ready to answer questions. So with that, Ms. Ballish.
Thank you, Peter. Just adjust this. All right. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm here to, I'm here tonight to give you a brief highlight of some of the important changes to the California Building Code. So the first two items that are on the list address the Berkeley balcony collapse. So what we recommend is providing ventilation to exterior balconies, ventilation underneath the exterior balconies to allow moisture to escape to prevent dry rot damage of the framing members. Also, we are requesting to require access panels to allow for periodic inspection and also to facilitate future maintenance of any damages to the balcony. The second item is actually a redundancy to the first item. We're requiring pressure-treated lumber or steel framing members to the exterior balconies also, again, to prevent any dry rot damage to balconies. The third item is the, we are decreasing the threshold for fire sprinklers required for new construction down to 350 square feet from 1,000 square feet for accessory structures and for new residential construction. The next item is we're requiring preliminary accessibility inspections of existing buildings that require commercial permits before they're issued. And we already have this program implemented with the Building Division. And what we have found is that this program really helps alleviate excessive disabled access problems, problems with compliance in the field. The last item we have that we're highlighting is basement window wells. So when basement window wells are deeper than 30 inches, they require guardrail for fall prevention. And the current ordinance requires gates at the top of the guardrail where the access, where the access ladder comes. And what we've found is that this is a very cumbersome configuration where you climb up the gate and then you have to lift, reach over and open the latch to open the gate. So during an emergency situation, we don't think that this is a very good construction assembly. We're just now requiring that the ladder goes up to the top of the guardrail and you climb over. And also, previously, we disallowed window well grates. Now we're going to allow them again in our changes. Okay?
All right. Thank you very much. So now, we move on to the Green Building Code and some of the amendments that we're proposing there. And here to speak on that item is Melanie Jacobson. So Melanie, please.
Thank you. Honorable councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. If you recall, last year, we brought forth before you the Green Building Ordinance, which was a mid-code cycle update. And those recommendations came before you in collaboration with the Green Building Advisory Group. So much of the ordinance that was brought for you, brought before you last year, has remained intact. And many of the updates are clarifications and other recommendations by the Green Building Advisory Group that I'll go through now that are on the slide. So one amendment that is proposed in the ordinance is the inclusion of a deconstruction survey for all residential demolition permits. So when a residential project comes to the development center to obtain a demolition permit, they'll be required to complete a deconstruction survey, which essentially is a survey of the existing conditions that's performed by a third party. And that third party identifies the items that can be reused and resold through a third-party vendor. And then at that point, the applicant can give those materials to that third party, and then those get put onto this market. The next item is the laundry-to-landscape infrastructure piping. That's a bit, that's a clarification from the previous version of the ordinance. And basically, just clarifies the piping requirements associated with the laundry-to-landscape-ready requirement that we instituted in the last version of the ordinance. The third item is the recycling of construction waste. And we're clarifying the percentage from 75% to 80%. And in the area of gray water, the fixtures have been clarified in terms of what's allowed and what's not allowed in terms of clarifying gray water. And in addition to water efficiency, there'll be a enhanced water budget required for commercial buildings, and that will be modeled after the San Francisco water budget. Thank you.
Okay. And that concludes our green building, just some of the highlights. Next, we're going to go on to the fire code. And Gio Blackshire, along with Carl Schneider, will walk you through those two amendments.
Good evening. So as you are told, Fire Marshal James Henrickson was unable to be here tonight, and he apologizes. However, he was kind enough to prepare a statement for me to read regarding the 2016 code adoption cycle. Esteemed councilmembers, the local amendments, which we recommend for your consideration and adoption tonight, are the product of four months of review of the 2016 California Fire Code by the Santa Clara County Fire Marshal Group with assistance from the County Hazardous Material Manager Group. These groups work diligently to refine the language of past ordinances in an effort to develop regional standards. We hope that this regionalization of expectations will help to streamline and plan review and overall development process for builders working between various jurisdictions within Santa Clara County. I would also like to point out that the reduction of fire-related loss and death will continue to be at the forefront of our code-related efforts. Like to mention that we lead the state and the nation with our cutting-edge smoke detector and sprinkler ordinances.
And finally, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hoyt, our Chief Building Official, to go through our changes to the plumbing code.
Good evening, council. Good evening, council. I want to go over one small change that we have. We have a plumbing amendment that is going to require backwater valves be installed in the sewer lateral of all new residential and commercial construction projects. This will allow us to protect these facilities from accidental backflow from the wastewater system. This was a collaborative effort that was taken and undergone with utilities and development services to provide this level of protection to these buildings. With that, we'll move to the next slide that recaps all of the municipal code ordinances, numbers, and their associated building code references that we will be modifying in these ordinances before you. And as a conclusion, we have the recommended motion before you. Thank you.
Thank you, George. And so with that, just to recap, this has been a collaborative effort. We continue to work with the group of architects, engineers, stakeholders, that we've been talking to over the past several years, that are a sounding board of sorts to ensure that they understand what's coming down the pike and to get feedback in terms of buildability, constructibility. And so all of this has been vetted well in advance. We've received that feedback, and the DCA has been very supportive in this effort. We've also, as Melanie Jacobson mentioned, reached out to our Green Building Advisory Group, an even more nished group of folks that really understand energy efficiency, green building, et cetera, when we talked about some of the improvements that were proposed in terms of our green building updates. So with that, we are all here, welcome. Any questions? And with that, we turn it back to the council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we have no speaker cards. I need to, actually, I should have said I want to open the public hearing. And we do not have speaker cards, so I will close the public hearing. And now that we've done that proper formality, I want to return to the council for a motion or any discussion. Vice Mayor Scharf.
So I'll move the staff recommended motion.
All right, that's the motion as on our screens by Vice Mayor Scharf, seconded by Councilmember Wolbach. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Just briefly, I wanted to thank staff for all the effort this took and the hard work. And I know this is a sort of a short item, and I actually thought, I appreciate the highlights to everything you did. Gives me some sort of a sense without having to read all the code. So thanks again for all your hard work.
Councilmember Wolbach. Councilmember Schmidt.
As a member of the Finance Committee, I ought to ask the question. Everything that you've laid out makes sense, looks good, improvement. What kind of cost are we talking about adding on to new construction? And I raise this issue because affordable housing is a critical piece of our, looking forward at our comp plan.
Well, when we discussed these among staff and with the DCA, we brought up specifically the issue of cost. Staff determined, along with input from our stakeholders, that the cost was de minimis. These were improvements that would add value to the construction projects. And we talked to Palo Alto Housing Corp. as well. We have a member from their group on our DCA, and they also confirmed that the issues that we're talking about are in the best interest of the construction and the life of the construction and improving their investment. Especially, the most costly would be the fire sprinklers. But again, it's one of those issues that adds value to the construction, reduces insurance costs.
But there was no notion of adding 1%, 2% to the cost of a new home?
We didn't go through an in-depth cost evaluation or an ROI study, but we did go through an overview of the measures and determined that they were de minimis enough not to have to go through that rigorous review, but...
Okay.
Councilmember DeBois.
I had a question on the swimming pool and spa. And it says, do people need a permit today to install a spa?
They do, and I'll let our Chief Building Official address that.
We don't require a permit to install a portable spa at this time. We do require electrical permit. We do require a permit for a pool.
Okay. And I noticed this was an international code. Just curious to give a little background, is there no California code? And give us maybe a sense of what we're adopting with the international code?
Yeah. So in the adoption of the California Buildings Code, they, the old version, last year, the 2013 version, included the swimming pool requirements. They have taken them out and recommended the adoption of the international pool in the Building Standards Commission.
Thank you.
All right. I see no more lights, so please vote on the board. Oh, Councilmember Holman, your light must be out of order tonight, so just be waving your hand when you want to speak.
Okay. Better than spitballs, huh? So on slide number seven, it says backwater valves are required for all new construction. So this includes single-family homes?
Yes.
Okay. So I, because I noticed these, and I noticed the size of them, and I noticed the location of them, and I also know someone that I think Peter's familiar with probably, that just did a rehabilitation of a house after a fire and had to put one in. And it's in a story home, happens to be on University Avenue, but just to do the rehab, he had to put one in, in front, in the front part of the house, and it's, they're big. So is there no flexibility in where they can be, what size they are, how they can be screened, contained, whatever, to not be such glaring intrusions into a front landscape or whatever?
Actually, Ms. Holman, I believe we're talking about two separate valves. The one that you're referring to is a backwater valve that is required on the water service that is located above grade. And what this is, is a valve that is in ground that protects the sewer line. And it's actually installed in ground, so it doesn't have, it's not visible.
Different valves?
Yeah, different valves.
Peter, I'd look forward to some way to deal with the other situations at some point in time. And then, looking to you again, Peter, you know how much I really appreciate what's on, the easy way to find it is slide five, that first item there. You know how much I absolutely appreciate that, is the deconstruction surveys required for residential demolition permits. I so very much appreciate that. And I have a couple of questions if I could. One is, who, who has access to doing those surveys? Is there some kind of qualification for those entities?
So we've gone through an extensive process of background checking and talking to the industry professionals in this area. So I'm going to pass this over to Melanie Jacobson to address. So we were prepared for this question.
Great. Thank you a lot.
Yes. So in preparation, to respond to your question, we reached out to the reuse people, which is the main vendor in the area, to kind of vet the process. So in terms of the third-party people that would be qualified, there would need to be, there would be a set of performance requirements that will be developed with the Green Building Advisory Group in collaboration with the reuse people. And the, there's a whole separate process that the IRS has actually identified related to the, there's a tax deduction associated with the deconstruction. So that's a starting point. The industry is very, is quite underdeveloped, so this, the hope is that we can spur this as a local industry. So we'll start with the, there's six organizations that do appraisals, and that's all based on the IRS guidelines. So we'll use that as the qualification for the third-party vendors and use, you know, partner with organizations such as the reuse people to actually go out and do the site visit, where they go through and determine which items can be reused. visit, where they go through and determine which items can be reused safely and which items need to be recycled and so forth.
So you mentioned there are six organizations, so the owner will have the opportunity, or contractor will have the opportunity, or the city chooses which one of those six organizations does a particular building?
The, the, it's the third-party vendor that, such as the reuse people, that decides which appraiser they use. So, it's the, the city will be able to provide a list of the third-party vendor that would go out and do the site assessment, and then the site assessed, the entity doing the site assessment would then go to the appraiser to do the next step, if they go for the donation and then the tax incentive.
So am I understanding this correctly, that the reuse company is the one that will then identify the third party, but what about other companies who do what reuse does?
So, there's only six organizations in the whole U.S. that do these appraisals. So, the reuse company would be one example of a company that could go out and do the , to do the site inspection, and then it needs to be verified by one of these appraisal companies.
I'm not quite getting it, so...
There's two, if I may jump in, there's two entities involved. First is the reuse people that actually, they are the ones that can facilitate taking of the materials to where they would put them into a warehouse and have them resold. But for the tax benefits, there's only a few certified people that can actually fill out the tax-exempt forms that you would need to get, the relief from the taxes, which is why, one of the reasons why people would do this reuse and this salvage process. So there's, we want to make sure that council understands, there's two entities involved, and the market is really coming up to speed in this area, and we're trying to spur it by providing the need to do these surveys.
I appreciate that, and I think maybe one area where I wasn't getting either clear response or maybe putting my question out clearly is there is a company called Reuse, and I thought that was what you was referring, you were referring to, but perhaps not. The other reason is, why is it only residential as opposed to commercial and residential?
That's a great question. We've had a response for you on that as well.
So, the majority of demolition permits, the intent of the requirement was that since the amount of construction that occurs in Palo Alto is residential, that's a really good place to start, so that we could vet the process. And from a reusability perspective, the residential market, it's a bigger market of items that can actually be reused compared to commercial construction, so we wanted to understand the process, understand the stakeholders and the opportunities, and then if it, seeing how it works out, then we could roll it out into commercial construction, hoping that we're creating an industry.
Great, and, go ahead, Peter.
So I just wanted to add that, you know, because it's a brand-new industry, and we're trying to sort of fan the flame on this, so to speak, we want to start somewhere, we could easily enforce it, and we would know what to do, but the loading order would be first make it legal, then promote it through these surveys, and then eventually try to mandate at some level, and then kind of build up from there. So we get, we give the construction community, telegraph our movements, so they know that this is coming. We've done the same thing with water conservation, energy efficiency, et cetera.
It's a really great start, and I very much appreciate it. And when do you think you'll be able to come back with some kind of report on what the salvage diversion rate is, as opposed to the recycling diversion rate?
So we have those reports available today. It is available on our Green Halo website, and we will be tracking that, so it is being tracked today, and we will continue to track it in the hopes that this will demonstrate a curve, a positive curve, to improve the number of salvation projects.
So maybe the next year or so you can come back with some kind of report?
Yes, we will be reporting back.
Okay, terrific. And then, two last things, and I so appreciate this, and you know I do, you know how much I appreciate this. And at the same time, where would we account for the environmental impact, because this is the green building standard code, and I know this is California, not Palo Alto, but where would Palo Alto account for the impact of the amount of demolition that we have? Because there is a standard that identifies that for, just for construction materials for a new project, commercial or residential, it's 75 pounds of CO2 created per square foot. So that is a considerable environmental impact. So where would we account for that? And that doesn't even include demolition, recycling, and transport, and that's also why this salvage issue is, and reuse issue is such an important one. So where would we account for that environmental impact?
Well, I'm going to have to put on my planner hat and dig deep into my planning experience about CEQA and environmental law, but I'm going to lean on Molly and Albert a little bit on this, but building permits are exempt from CEQA. They're a ministerial permit, and they don't trigger any kind of CEQA review. Therefore, they, this kind of quote, I hate to even use the word, but this type of effect wouldn't necessarily trigger any kind of environmental impact report or negative declaration. But I want to pass it on to the CAO's office.
Right, and I'm not referring to CEQA right here, I'm just talking about where would we capture, because, you know, the demolition survey also isn't required by CEQA.
Oh, okay.
I'm looking at where we would capture and where we would analyze what those impacts are.
Oh, you're just talking about the numbers, the carbon and...
Yes, yes, I'm talking about the environmental impact, not CEQA, just our own local impact due to demolition, new construction.
So we capture...
And I'm not, I'm not judging what we're doing in terms of demolition or construction, I'm just saying we should be capturing, it seems to me, the information related to that, so we know what we're doing as a community.
And we are capturing that information, again, on the Green Halo site. It's available, it's required that every deconstruction project fill out this deconstruction survey, and we require that all of the contractors do deconstruction activity. We're revisiting and trying to improve that program, and we'll be coming back with some amendments, but it is being tracked, not only the tonnage, but the carbon-related impacts associated with that waste. And we're tracking that, and so if this starts to see a positive trend, we'll be sure to report out on the tonnage as well as the weight.
So, not just the waste, but the new materials being created?
Greenhouse gas emissions.
So, will that be coming to the council, and what the next...
I can bring that back in an informational item over the next year, once we've been able to track some of the salvage material.
In addition, if I may add, we do, in addition to what Peter said, we do track the information that's on the Green Halo site, we do a conversion to the greenhouse gas calculations that will come before you in the Earth Day report.
Okay, good. Because I think, I think people might make different decisions or be more conscious or aware of what their projects entail, if they just had it, you know, spelled out in front of them, like what, what the consequences are and what the impacts are. So, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, on that note, I think we're ready to vote on the board. And that passes 9-0, so thank you to all the members of the staff who came tonight and for all the hard work that went into this. I know it looks pretty technical, but there's a great deal of work, and our city staff continues to put us on the cutting edge in these arenas. So we will now move on to item number 11, which is a public hearing on proposed single-story overlay for Fair Court number three and four. This is a request for a zone change of those, Fair Court three and four tracts from R1 Single Family Residential to R1 Single Family Residential with a single-story overlay. The environmental assessment is that it's exempt from CEQA, and the Planning and Transportation Commission recommended denial of the SSO request. So, Mr. Lee, welcome.
Great, thank you, Mayor Burt, and good evening, City Council. Amy French, our chief planning official, will give the presentation tonight, and I just wanted to take a second to thank and acknowledge Amy for her hard work on not only this, but there's been a lot of these SSO requests, and they do take a lot of time and care and feeding with the, with applicants and so forth, so...
And I should have noted that at our places, there was a stapled packet that is labeled item number eight, but it appears to be related to this item number 11, so I just wanted to make sure everybody saw that. Ms. French, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. We are here tonight for the Fair Court single-story overlay request, which was initiated by property owners within this tract. The application for a single-story overlay requires a certain minimum threshold of support for a single-story overlay. In the case of a tract that has a CCNRs in place, there is a threshold of 60% owner support. The applicants met this at application. A single-story overlay prohibits new second stories and additions at the second-story level. The second-story overlay does not change the allowable square footage, so that you can have the same site coverage and floor area ratios, one and the same. So a 44-home boundary has been proposed by the applicants. That revision to the original 50-home tract was submitted on April 29th, and as of August 16th, there was a support level of 63%. There are nine existing single-story overlays in Palo Alto affecting 1,003 properties. All of these single-story overlay districts are post-war Eichler neighborhoods. There is an Eichler Design Guidelines effort underway, and we are working to get a consultant contract in process. You will be seeing a consultant contract in the coming months. It'll be about a year-long process, and it may also result in alternatives to the single-story overlay. Here on the screen are the nine single-story overlay neighborhoods. There's been some opposition to single-story overlays. The last one that came to council, Royal Manor, had some of these concerns. There's concern about property values and rights, concern about fairness, because there are existing two-story homes in this neighborhood. There are four two-story homes in the neighborhood. And in this case, the Planning and Transportation Commission recommended denial. At the time of the final Planning Commission hearing on this item, there was a support level of 59%. More recently, in fact, last night, we did receive a petition from members of, or property owners on Ross Road. And two, three of these, excuse me, three of the signors, the signators, had previously expressed support for the single-story overlay and have reversed their support as of this petition. So there's only one Ross Road supporter now, and on your screen kind of shows the history of this. So the council has two options. One is to adopt the ordinance, which would result in a single-story overlay for this neighborhood of 44 homes within the boundary, or reject or defer the single-story overlay as proposed. I'm going to go back to the screen here, or maybe this screen, for the conversation. And I should say there, the applicants are here, I don't know if they've submitted cards.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we can take questions from the council, which would be technical questions, not rhetorical ones, and, and then we'll go to the public for the hearing. Councilmember Niss.
And maybe, Ms. French, I missed what you said. The current, I know it had sufficient, sufficient percentage when it came initially. Where is the percentage as of now? Because I, I know that there have been some changes.
Yes, as, as of last...
Did I just miss it on this slide?
There is a, at places memo that reflects this, and on the screen I've put this more recent...
Sorry, Amy, my apologies, I missed the bottom one on it. So you're now at 56.8, correct, as of today?
Correct.
Good, thanks.
Councilmember Wolbach.
Does staff recall what the percentage was of the Royal Manor SSO that we did not approve, what the percentage of support was approximately? If you don't have it off the top of your head, don't, that's fine.
I don't recall, at the end, it was a bit up and down.
It was fluctuating quite a bit. Okay, that's fine, thanks.
Vice Mayor Scharf.
So I just wanted to clarify, I was confused. Of the 44 homes that this would encompass, right, the four homes that are, that are two-story, are they supporting or not supporting? Are we counting them or not counting them when we do these percentages?
Yes, all, all of the homes within the tract count towards the, are the 44. And then to get to the current 25, we, we remove those who have submitted a, you know, a reversal. So one of those is a two-story home on Ross, at the bottom of the page here. There are one, two, three, four two-story homes. This is the new home on Lewis, and then here are the other three two-story homes within the boundary. I think none of the two-story homes support the proposal at this time.
So none of the two-story homes support it?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Berman.
So as, I know that a petition went out for the original 50 parcel tract, and then after that, six homes along Tasman, Talisman?
Tasman, no, Talisman.
Were removed. Was there any sort of check-in with the other 44 parcels to ask them whether or not, you know, their position was the same based on the newly drawn boundary?
The applicants did, you know, there was a public hearing, several public hearings where there was opportunity for those to speak, but the applicants did say they spoke with some of those folks. I think the arguments for removing Talisman was across the street and really next to a whole different neighborhood that didn't have Eichler homes, so it was kind of a...
But we didn't, understood it.
Yeah.
I understand the reason for removing it, but we didn't do a check-in with everybody to see?
Staff did not go and interview the neighbors who were still within the boundary to see if they were in favor of that.
Burt, thanks.
And I just had a question on, oh, Councilmember Holman, yep, sorry.
Okay, so a clarifying question about two things. One is, if someone currently has a two-story home, but they want to redevelop, would they be allowed to redevelop as a two-story home because they already had a two-story home? Would they have to redevelop as a single-story home?
So, willful destruction versus a fire of some sort, I mean, this is where we get into a different...
Yes, willful.
Yeah, so if they were to tear down their house in a willful manner, that what would be put back would be a one-story home.
Okay, and then, it's not clear to me, and I'm sorry, the, the white, the white or non-colored, non-stripped, non-green parcels, what does that mean?
It means...
They didn't respond?
That they were not a yes, and it means that they therefore never submitted a reversal. So they declined to sign the petition.
So we don't know if they're yeses or nos? They're just non-respondent?
It's assumed no.
Okay, thank you.
And can you clarify that under our regulations, we don't have a no vote? We only require affirmatives to...
We require evidence of signatures of one of the property owners of each of the properties to, to affirm their support of a single-story overlay.
Okay, thank you. And this tract falls under the 60% threshold because it has CCNRs? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And this may be more of a question for the city attorney, but one of the, one of the residents who wrote to the council had made points about whether CCNRs had discontinued to be enforced in any way, and that the evidence was the multiple two-story homes in the neighborhood. When I go back to our original basis for setting up single-story overlays and the two thresholds, one was on the neighborhoods with CCNRs, that, an assumption that, that those CCNRs were enforceable and that this, our ordinances would... those CCNRs were enforceable, and that this, our ordinances would provide a mechanism other than neighbors suing neighbors to be able to enforce those CCNRs. So I want to understand if we have a neighborhood where CCNRs, for a long period of time, have not been enforced and have multiple two-story homes. Does that change the ability of a, of a private party to attempt to enforce the CCNRs? And I appreciate, I'm asking you for not guidance on a city legal action, but what, what private parties would have a right to do, which would influence our decision-making?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Bert. So from a going-forward perspective, the CCNRs still exist on the property, and if somebody builds a two-story house in violation of the CCNRs, it is still possible to privately enforce that from a, you know, prospective basis. Going back, it's a little different. There are two sets of CCNRs that govern this tract, and we did take a look at, at the CCNRs. One of the CCNRs governing the tract says that once a two-story house or other type of house that is built in violation of the CCNRs is constructed, and there is no lawsuit following a certain period of time, I believe it's 18 months, that the, the house can remain. So that, that's a, you know, a bit of a, you know, it's a contractual issue that
Can I pause and ask a follow-up on that part before you continue with the other? So based on what we just heard from Ms. French in response to Councilmember Holman's question, does that mean that our ordinance would be more restrictive than the CCNRs? Because under CCNRs alone, it could not have a retroactive enforcement for a home that had built a two-story, but if we adopted the ordinance, it would be retroactive under a willful demolition?
Yes. That is correct, as to the parcels that are governed by that set of CCNRs. So yes, that's correct.
And sorry, you had another one, I think, or?
No, I think that, so you just, I think that there, there are several different issues at play here.
Are there two CCNRs?
The application came with two different sets of CCNRs. We haven't reviewed the CCNRs for every parcel. There may be additional CCNRs, but, you know, I think the applicant represented to us that there were only two different sets of documents governing the tract.
Okay. Vice Mayor Scharf?
So I just wanted to follow up on that, and see if your understanding is the same as mine. So if there are changed circumstances, i.e. the building of four two-story homes, there's a doctrine in the law that says it becomes a matter of fact of whether or not there's, changes circumstances are so great as that the CCNRs are no longer enforceable when you litigate these cases. So I guess I just want to understand if you agree that it would seem that it becomes, litigation becomes uncertain in this circumstance, and it's not clear who would win?
Well, certainly with respect to the set of CCNRs that, that don't have the kind of safe harbor for the, for the situation where there has been no lawsuit. When we're talking about those houses, I think that, yeah, there are a variety of defenses that, that a property owner could assert to the enforcement of a CCNR that hasn't been enforced for years.
All right. So we will now go to the public, and this is a public hearing. So we will open the public hearing. We have currently five speaker cards. If anyone else wishes to speak, please come forward now and submit a card. Our first speaker is Allison Cormack, to be followed by Jackie Geist. Welcome.
Good evening. Let me start by saying I love living in my one-story Iklar on Ross Road. I have no plans to build a two-story or sell my house, but I am here tonight to speak against this proposal. As I said to the Planning and Transportation Commission a number of months ago, retroactively changing the rules about how homeowners use their property just doesn't seem appropriate to me. There are really a lot less restrictive ways to preserve the open space feel in our backyards. For example, the two-story home next to my Iklar is a thoughtful addition. It does not affect my backyard or raise any privacy concerns. Massing might need to be near the front of the lot to accommodate existing home layouts, but it is certainly possible to have a second story without disturbing your neighbors. Specifically, I do not believe that our block, which you can see up there, which has 50% of the two-story homes listed in the proposal, fits. We have seven houses on our side of the street included in this proposal. Two of them are two stories. There are five houses on the other side of the street, and three of those are two stories, two-story homes on the block to the north of us and on the block to the south of us. Our block is a wide street with mature trees, already accommodates a variety of heights and architectures. Six of the seven homeowners have asked the entire block be removed, as the applicants did for a block on Talisman earlier. And with this, you know, support is now significantly below the threshold, which is the lowest threshold for SSOs in the city. Finally, I'd like to address the frankly abysmal communication problems with this process. Applicants understandably share their side of the story when they request signatures. The city then sent a small postcard titled Fair Court, which I embarrassed to admit ignored the first time because I had never heard of Fair Court. I've lived in that house for 15 years. I had no idea my home was part of it. And crucially, which is just amazing, there was never an opportunity for neighbors to have a discussion and ask questions, only to make binding decisions with frankly really limited information. I just don't think this is an acceptable way to make significant land use decisions. I respectfully request that you reject this proposal as the PTC recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jackie Geist, to be followed by Roland Finston. Oh, and Jackie Geist is a co-petitioner. Do, is, is there a different time amount?
No, this is a legislative act, and so we're, I think, just having individual petitioners to fill out speaker cards.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council, my name is Jackie Geist, and I live on Evergreen Drive. I am the co-petitioner for this Fair Court single-story overlay. So many details have changed since we as petitioners began our process to bring an SSO to our neighborhood over a year ago. Since our petition was first submitted with required over 60% participation by homeowners, several signers have changed their votes due to campaigns by non-supporters to influence them. Also, we have eliminated certain houses in this tract because they back up to non-Iklar neighborhoods. And also, we've had some new buyers who have added their support to the single-story overlay. The reasons for our goal of creating a single-story overlay remain the same. Iklar homes come with bring the outdoors to the indoors philosophy in design. That's why most of us chose them in the first place. Having a two-story home built in the back of one's house, as we have, or on either side, brings with it a total lack of privacy to the one-story with its backyard and walls of glass. The backyard and many rooms of one-story are exposed, and individual privacy is compromised, if not eliminated, when a two-story house is built next door or behind you. Another reason for our SSO is to maintain the character, uniformity, and feeling of our neighborhood as was intended in the original subdivision. We have a very small neighborhood, just 50 houses, set in an enclosed rectangular pattern with basically no through traffic, extremely diverse architecture, two-story homes with, for example, Mediterranean architecture is not very aesthetically pleasing to us. We have found that property values are not affected by adding an SSO. Buyers now seek out Iklars and buy them because they are Iklars. Another point is that these houses provide comparatively lower-cost homes if one chooses to live in Palo Alto. Adding a second story will increase the square footage of a house and therefore raise the selling price of the house, standing in the way of offering the possibility of a lower-priced house to a community that is in need of such. Fair Court 3 and 4 is located in a flood zone. To rebuild even a one-story house after a tear-down requires adding an elevation of nine inches to a foot to the ground or floor level of the house, already making it taller than its adjacent house, even if it is only one story. We respectfully ask that the council consider what is being lost to our neighborhood without the protection of a single-story overlay. Thank you.
Thank you. Roland Finston, to be followed by Robert Moss.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bert, and the council. We are here to ask you to consider the following. In the two meetings that we have had with the Planning and Transportation Commission, the last minute, a day before, two days before the commission meeting, reversals occurred where people who had signed the petition came forward and said they did not wish to continue to support. Even today's meeting changed drastically in the past two days. We have had more than 60% support for our petition since August, and actually going back to June of this year, we've had the more than 60% support. It just was last weekend that we learned that three of the supporters on Ross Road had reversed themselves, giving us virtually no chance to find new supporters. Interestingly, however, is the fact that in addition to withdrawing their support, the total of five people on Ross Road sent a memo petition to Amy French on Monday, asking that all the houses on Ross Road be taken out of the SSO proposal. They've asked you to do that. We would not object to that at all, and we ask you to consider their request to withdraw those six houses. As a result of those six houses being withdrawn, there would be then 38 remaining houses in the SSO. We would have 24 proponents of the overlay at that moment. 24 of 38 is 63%, and meets the requirements of the SSO. So we would ask you to remove Ross Road because the residents of Ross Road want to be removed from the SSO. And consider then that we would be at 63%, which meets the requirements for the SSO. If you do not do that, I am fearful that a domino effect is going to set in if the SSO is rejected, and we will see more and more second stories or even scrape-offs, which is what happened on Lewis Road directly across from the Iklar Women Tennis Club, and which generated our request for this SSO. I appreciate your considering that
Thank you.
set of points.
Our next speaker is Robert Moss, to be followed by Randy Brennewitz.
Thank you, Mayor Bert, and councilmembers. I just wanted to make some general comments about the single-story overlay. As you know, Iklars are designed as an open-type building, large windows looking out at the interior, usually interior yards, and designed so that there are a group of single-story buildings next to each other, and they don't look into each other's windows. So when you put a two-story building in that area, and you start getting problems with people feeling that they're being infringed upon, which is why we have overlays in a number of Iklar neighborhoods. Now, I have no skin in this game. I don't live in an Iklar neighborhood. I think there are no more than maybe two dozen Iklars in all of Baron Park. But the people who do live in an Iklar neighborhood have real issues about privacy and about consistency of appearance of the buildings. So I think that'll be considered. Now, one of the objections to having an SSL is property values. I have never seen a Realtor say that a two-story house with the same area as a one-story house is more valuable. I have lived in two-story houses and one-story houses, and believe me, I far prefer living in a one-story house. I would pay a little bit more for a one-story house than a two-story. I consider it a lot more convenient. So the idea that property values are going to be impacted negatively by having an SSL does not compute. And if you want to ask Realtors, I think you'll find they'll all say the same thing. The second thing is whether or not the specific dimensions of the SSO should be revised. It's not uncommon. Once an approval is requested, for some of the people to change their minds and ask to have the dimensions changed, to have the lines of the SSL revised. Whether you do that or not is up to you. In this case, you can argue that because the people have withdrawn their approval, they're no longer 60% in favor of the SSO for the outline that's on the board before you. And in that case, you could, of course, remove the one street and go back up to over 60%. That would be logical. If you wish to do so, fine. But the point I'd like to make is, it's reasonable for people who live, especially in Iklars, to ask for SSOs. There's no reason to say that this is a bad thing or a good thing. You look at the particular issue of the particular request and decide on that basis.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Randy Brennewitz, to be followed by our final speaker, Drew Fisher.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, I am a resident of Fair Court 3 and 4, which I didn't know I was either, but I certainly know I live in an Iklar neighborhood and have for the past 32 years. And this is the first time I've actually been to a city council meeting, so I guess this whole thing is worthwhile in that space. It's been interesting. I want to speak to several issues that have been raised, and I hope I can do so without repeating what some of the previous speakers have said. I, if you, if you look at the current configuration, I want to agree with the woman from, who lives on Ross Road who spoke. Ross Road, although it's somehow, however, the original boundaries were decided upon, Ross Road was part of it. But if you know the neighborhood, Ross Road is a wide street that is, we consider a main street going through our neighborhood. The other streets are our Buddhist and my street, Thornwood. And these are little streets that feel very suburban. They're isn't through traffic, they're very private, and they have a feel of being part of a neighborhood, specifically in this case, an Iklar neighborhood. And I know that, that in Los Altos, in one of the Iklar neighborhoods there, a friend of mine who happens to be a recent purchaser, so I know how much she paid for her house, our property values actually, we think, were increased, not because of square footage or one story versus two stories, but there are people who are actually seeking out Iklars because it's very in right now to be doing mid-century modern kind of architecture. And I worry that if we destroy that, we never get to get it back. Because once, once we start proliferating that kind of bigger housing on small lots, the other thing is if you look at the size of the lots, these are not huge lots, and so you start putting these big houses on them, I think that it destroys the feel of the neighborhood and will in fact, in the long run, reduce our property values. So I worry about that. I am recently over 65. My husband My husband and I have a large percentage of our retirement income and hopefully our long-term income invested in that house, and we are concerned about it. Again, also, the nature of the Eichlers are such that it's not simply that they're one-story homes. I'm sure most of you have been in Eichlers and have been in the neighborhoods. They've been around for a long time. There are huge amounts of glass with the outside being part of, feeling like it's part of your house. I don't even have blinds or curtains on some of my windows that go out into that area because I want to bring the outside in. I certainly know if somebody next door to me built a two-story house, the first thing I would have to do is go curtain shopping. And that would certainly ruin the feel of the neighborhood. So based on both property values and neighborhood feel, I would encourage you to consider removing the Ross Road folks and then to pass this overlay for us.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Drew Fisher, and we have one final card, Richard Willetts.
Hello, thank you. I am a resident not of the Fair Court Three or Four tracts, but of the nearby housing on Arbutus Avenue, and I just wanted to express my gentle opposition to the SSO proposal. I live in a two-story house. I live with a community of other young tech professionals. We've been in this house for almost six years, and I appreciate that the neighborhood has two-story houses and that we are able to have this community that is able to live in this wonderful town. And I don't have any particular sway over what is being proposed. I just wanted to express my support as a concerned citizen. This is the first city council meeting that I've been to as well, and just wanted to state my feelings. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Richard Willetts.
Good evening, councilors. I want to remind you that the general nature of the SSO is to bring enforcement of the single-story restriction, which already exists in the CCNRs, to the city planning department, where it can be done in a much more efficacious fashion than if it is left to the neighborhood to enforce. The one point that may have been missed in the previous discussion about that is that there is an Architectural Control Commission that is mandated in the CCNRs, and it only takes 50% for this neighborhood, if they lose this SSO fight, in order to invoke that and then bring the fight into the neighborhood. That, to me, doesn't seem like a good way of doing land planning. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll return to the council for discussion and motions. Would like to go first. Councilmember DuBois.
So one of the options staff recommended was possibly a deferral. I wondered if you could explain the thinking behind that?
Well, as mentioned, we are working towards getting a consultant to prepare Eichler guidelines. So to the extent that the council was interested in letting that play out, I mean, that would be potentially a year-long process, and there's risk to that. But that would be one reason you might defer action.
So we would just postpone this to some future date, and I guess at that time we would probably need to resurvey, or if it's two years after they started?
I mean, it's a legislative process, so it's, you know, there's not a Permit Streamline Act in operation here for this application.
Okay. And then one of the speakers suggested removing the six homes on Ross. I guess I see seven homes on Ross, so how would that work?
I think there are seven homes. If those were removed, indeed, the percentage of support would be higher. And that is also, I guess, third option would be the council could reduce the boundary without having to renotice this item.
Okay. So this has been a pretty lengthy process. It's taken nearly a year to get to us. I think one of the speakers mentioned there was no chance for the neighborhood to talk. I think this process is set up for neighbors to talk to each other without involving the city, and I would hope that happens. You know, and it requires meeting the threshold when you apply, which they did. And we've seen a couple of these SSOs that have bounced up and down right around that decision point. Just wanted to point out here that each home is about 2%. So, you know, two more homes, we'd be back over the 60%. It's really just fluctuating. I think we heard that the CCRs could be active, so if it's not approved and the residents remain concerned about this, I'd suggest you reactivate those CCRs. And I'm going to listen to my colleagues and hear what their thoughts are.
Councilmember Berman.
I have some comments that really relate to every SSO application, and I think I made these a couple of months ago, and I'll make them again. Let me first ask a question. So I know that we asked staff to go back and do Eichler guidelines, and I appreciate fully the fact that staff is overloaded, and I think it's fine for that to take time. I think it should be a deliberate process, and I think that's a good thing. Did we also ask staff to bring back to us at some point an opportunity to discuss the SSO process and make changes to that process?
Yes, that was part of an earlier motion with the Royal Manor public hearing. And certainly, the scope for the consultant includes, you know, looking at other legislative-type changes in addition to guidelines for architectural treatment.
Okay, so we're almost asking them to do two different things. Do we, is it necessary to have a consultant to do that, or is that something that can come back to staff for us to-
Yeah, we're looking at, we are, you'll have an opportunity to discuss this, I guess, when we come back with the consultant contract for the council to review. But certainly, it would be a team approach, you know, but go hand-in-hand with, because all of these single-story overlays are Eichler neighborhoods.
Sure, sure, sure. So I, you know, and now my macro comments, which are, we have a terribly broken process, and it's one that pits neighbors against neighbors, you know, and we see it on both sides. Some neighbors say they feel pressured to sign it, and then others say they feel pressured to reverse, or there was pressure to reverse. I mean, everybody on all sides, I think, agrees or feels like neighbors are influencing neighbors in undue ways, and that's not a good thing for our community. That's not a good thing for our neighborhoods. That creates too much kind of adversarial tension, I think, between neighbors. And I think that's because we have this process where we, as a city, say to folks in the neighborhood, "Take a petition and take it around to your neighborhood to collect signatures." I think we need, the city needs to play a larger role of kind of regulating the election or overseeing the election and creating an opportunity for neighbors in the privacy of their own home to be able to decide what decision they want to make on such an important decision, because this isn't a small thing. And neighbors shouldn't feel pressured at a neighborhood block party or, because a friend of theirs that they've known for decades shows up on their front door and, you know, someone who they've known for a long time, their kids might have played together, who might have done favors for them in the past. And, you know, from my neighborhood where I grew up in Palo Alto, that would be the case. So I know some people might feel like that's not the case, but I know that if I had some neighbors that came to my door where I grew up in Crescent Park and said, "Hey, I really feel strongly about this," I would, all those things would come into play with how I would respond. And I think people, residents, should get the opportunity to respond in private. I also have concerns, frankly, about the fact that it's just one homeowner that needs to sign it and the fact that there isn't something there that says that there needs to be a conversation between the two homeowners or more before they make a decision. I think that just is a bad process point. So I think we need to change this process. I would be okay with delaying this until we improve the process. I don't think we need to reject it. One question I had was, in the staff report, it says if we reject it, that it can't be brought back until a year after May 25, 2017. Was that supposed to be May 25, 2016?
No. Yeah, it's a year from the time, I believe it's a year from the time the Planning and Transportation Commission recommended denial.
So they could not bring it back until May 25, 2017?
If you rejected, if you rejected the application, in other words, denied the application-
Correct.
-then they can reapply, but they have to wait.
Until May 25, 2017. And for my colleagues, the staff report says it can't be until a year after May 25, 2017. So that is not correct. You see what I'm saying? Thank you. It's one year, yes. So it would be another seven months until they could reapply. The staff report is wrong. It has, it adds an extra year to it, and some of my colleagues didn't seem to agree with me at first. So I also have a problem. If we just remove Ross Road, I think there needs to be some additional outreach to the homes adjacent to that, because that changes their calculus. That changes the decision they made in the first place. You know, if I were to say yes to an SSO, thinking that all the homes around me, it would apply to them also, and then all of a sudden, the houses in my backyard, it wouldn't apply to, I might think about this differently. And I think those parcels of land should have an opportunity to, or really all parcels, I think, in the boundary, should have an opportunity to essentially revote on what is a totally different SSO boundary. So those are just a couple of my thoughts. I'm fine with, you know, extending this or deferring it, continuing it, but I really think that, I don't feel comfortable at this stage supporting any SSO that comes to us until we change the process and have a community discussion about what a better process would be.
Councilmember Scharf, yes, Scharf. Go ahead.
Whoever it is. So a couple of things. On this deferring versus rejecting concept, what I heard you say was that if we defer it, it then comes back at some point. Whereas if we reject it, they go out, they can't after May, seven months from now, go and get new petition, go talk to the neighbors and do that. Whereas if we defer it, then doesn't it come back with the current petition? I mean, I'm trying to figure out, if it's only seven months, what is the advantage of deferring versus rejecting? It's, I'm confused on that. Why would we defer if it's only seven months?
Okay, can I go back to, there was an earlier statement about May, and I'm not sure that I saw the source for that statement, but it's possible that was about Royal Manor. Is that right?
Page 472. The same page.
Thank you. 472.
Page 4. Page four of the staff report.
You're right there.
Yeah, right there.
Resubmit, okay. Yeah, because May 25 was when the planning commission looked at it. Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I was on the same page, literally. Okay. So the question is, deferral versus rejection?
Well, versus rejection, given that seven months from now, they could go back, submit a new petition, go to all their neighbors. Whereas the only purpose for, I understood from deferring it, was that we would look at the Eichler guidelines. That process takes at least a year, and at that point, it would come back after that. But at that point, everything seems to be out of date. I mean, it's been a year, there could be people moved and stuff. I just see no, I see absolutely no reason why deferral would be a smart thing to do, and I'm trying to understand why, since it's only seven months. I mean-
Right. I mean, I think I gave an example of why you could defer it. There could be other reasons why you might defer it for four months. In other words, one very good reason would be to go and survey those who back up to the Ross Road properties to see how they feel about, you know, if those are removed, the Ross Road properties, how do they feel about, you know, are they still supportive of an SSO that would exclude Ross Road? I think that would be a good reason for deferral.
Okay, so it wouldn't have anything to do with the Eichler guidelines, because that was the context that we'd had. All right, so that was the first question. Let's see. I guess I'll make some comments then. So on this, this seems to be one of the quietest SSOs. I mean, other times they've come before us, there's been lots of people in the audience, and it seems to be much more passion around doing it. Frankly, I mean, there's not that many people that showed up on such an important issue. I'm not quite sure what to make of that. People seem equally split. It's below the threshold. It doesn't seem, it doesn't, it seems like it's right on the edge, which I guess is what we've seen. It's fluctuated back and forth. I think that makes it really hard for me to support it, frankly. It doesn't, it doesn't seem like there's strong neighborhood support to do this. I haven't seen, I mean, people signed this, but I haven't seen a lot of people come and speak for it, frankly. On that basis, I'll just move that we deny it.
Second.
I want to speak to my motion.
Yep, go ahead and speak to your motion.
So we've set it up that it's 70% if there are no CCNRs, 60% if it is CCNRs. There are CCNRs. We've had the 60%. It's fallen below the 60%. When we've done this in the past, we rejected the last one that came to us that was below it. I agree with a lot of Mark's comments, Councilmember Berman's, regarding that the process does seem broken to me and does seem to need to be fixed. And since we've sort of have this, at least what we've been doing in the past, it seems to me, is that when it gets below the threshold, which in this case is even lower than the 70%, we haven't moved forward with it. I don't really see a strong reason to defer. People can come back on this in seven months, which is, you know, fairly soon time if there is strong support for this at some point. And I'm really uncomfortable with the notion of, first of all, we broke off one road, and now we're going to break off another road. And the idea is that every time it loses support, you figure out, how can we make it meet that 60% threshold? I actually don't think that's a good process either. And I really do think I would like to encourage staff, and I know it takes a while, and we've asked for it, is to come up with a plan where we, where, I think what Councilmember Berman was talking about, where you have some sort of a ballot, where people talk about it, and that's the ballot that counts, so it's not a matter of shifting or not shifting support, and that's the ballot we use. Or some process like that that seems fair and that we use the natural boundaries of the tract, and it's not a matter of seven homes over here don't want to do it and 12 do. I'm just uncomfortable with that process. I think we want a fair process that's transparent, open, like we as pride to do in the city. And this doesn't really feel like this. It feels like it shifts depending on how we can sort of make it work. So therefore, I can't support supporting this at this time.
And Councilmember Niss.
So let me ask Ms. French a question while I second the motion. What do we have to do to change this process? Because it really is, I feel like it's deja vu, back to Royal Manor again, and I'm really troubled that one of the audience spoke to the fact that she didn't know she was in Fair Court. That's, this process is not only broken, but we're having people kind of fall out along the wayside, and I think that's troubling. Ross Road said tonight very clearly that they want out of this without question, and the applicants have very kindly said they would let them out of it. But I think we've gone down this road before, and as I said, it feels very deja vu, back to Royal Manor. So if we don't fix this, this is going to come back to us again. So do you need a referral from us? Do you need this request in public? What will it take?
So, thank you, Councilmember Niss. I believe that the council's already given staff direction to update and take a look at the SSO process, and right now, it's just a matter of where that gets plugged into the other work items that we have. I don't believe there's any other pending applications for SSOs.
No, I know there are some out there that are watching the ones that have come through and waiting.
So, I mean, yeah, so I think part of the public dialogue is informing other future applications.
So until there's a real, a real city-owned process, I think we're going to go through just what Mark said tonight. We're going to keep chewing on it, and people will visit their neighbors again to get another change, and that- So until there's a real, a real city-owned process, I think we're going to go through just what Mark said tonight. We're going to keep chewing on it, and people will visit their neighbors again to get another change, and that's, that's really awkward. It's awkward for the neighborhood as well. I spent some time in that neighborhood, a couple of hours on Sunday. Ross Road is quite differentiated from the rest of the, of the tract. And I spent a lot of time just walking in the, in the area that the applicants are from. And I would agree, it's a lovely area, and it's, it does even feel separated. But I think, I think tonight, the correct thing is to deny the request.
Yeah, the point has been made. The last three of these, we've had discussions at council. They've become very contentious, that votes are close, people change their minds, and we end up neighbors arguing with neighbors, instead of the city having clear guidelines. I think there's a good case to be made that staff recommends approval of this. And let me note the issues in this that stand out. The original petition met the minimum. Now, that's what our rules say. If the petition meets the minimum, we should approve. But we have this thing about people changing their mind. It takes time to get here, and people change their mind. But in this case, it's particularly important because it has CCNR. That means that everyone who bought a house in that area got a deed that said, this is a single-story neighborhood. That's a pretty convincing case, that the intention of the neighborhood was clearly stated in the deed. And everyone who purchased it, who looked at his deed, saw that that was the rules of the game. I thought it was also very prominent here, that two new buyers came in and added their name to the petition. That they were buying into a neighborhood that had these very protections that they were buying into. That, to me, is very convincing evidence. But I think the PTC, while they rejected the staff recommendation, made a very important point, that the process and system we have isn't working. People don't know what the rules of the game are. People change. New arguments come up, and they come back and forth. And so we end up with this page that shows four reversals over, what, six months? Four months? We need Eichler Design Guidelines. We have, what, over 1,000 homes now in single-story Eichler neighborhoods? We have others petitioning to get in. They are a distinct style done by a well-known architect that are now over 50 years old, and they are in market demand. What is it about them? Is it just a single-story overlay, or something about the character of life? And are there rules that we could get from working through the Design Guidelines that can help neighbor and neighbor talk together about how to work out these things? So I would make an alternate motion that we continue this item to a later date, so it can be discussed in conjunction with the council's earlier direction to explore Eichler zoning or design guidelines.
Did you want to speak further to that?
Just that I think this is a unique case because of the CCNRs, because they came in, they followed the rules and came in with their petition. The new buyers have come in and said, I like this, I want to pay money for it, I'm willing to pay the value of the property. Makes sense that we don't deny it without the expiration of guidelines.
Councilmember DeBoer.
Yeah, I kind of want to address the question that was raised of, you know, what's the difference between rejecting this and deferring this? Because I think there's some pretty clear differences. It's a lot of, a lot of work to apply, right? And they spent nearly a year getting to this point, gathering the signatures, going to the PTC, and they can't really come back in seven months. It takes longer than that. So I don't, I just don't think it's fair to wear people down by rejecting it and saying, go through that whole process again. I also think, again, whatever, I could, what everybody's saying, we need to figure out what the rules are and stick to the rules. I don't think the efforts are being necessarily characterized fairly. I think a group of people hit 60% when they applied, which is the rule. And then people, the question is like, when do we allow people to change votes, right? So people changed their votes. They said, let's remove some of the homes that are not part of the Eichler neighborhood. They went back over 60%. And they stayed at 60% from June until a couple of days ago. As one of the speakers mentioned, didn't really have a chance to react over the weekend. So, and then I am listening to kind of the discussion about Ross Road, and I think we should maybe let the neighborhood decide if Ross should be considered outside of the grouping. So they'd be at 63% if we took those Ross homes out. So I want to respect the work and the effort of the residents to get here. I think just rejecting this is not fair. I would propose maybe an amendment to the motion, which is to give them the option of, and I'm not wording this right now, I'm just speaking out loud. So you have to continue this agenda item to a date when council consider the updates, and I like to say, or allow, allow the neighborhood to decide if they want to remove the homes on Ross.
Sure.
That's it.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. So, so the amendment here is to continue this to a date, just to make sure I understand the amendment, continue this to a date when the neighbors can come back with determination about whether they want to exclude Ross Road. Is that what you're saying? Is that what the amendment is? Well, let me say a couple of things. That at least improves that we're, I think, more supportable. I guess a question for staff is, how soon could this come back? If we just continue this, when could it come back? I mean, I know it depends partly on the neighbors, but when could it be agendized to come back?
Well, so there's a lot of variability there. I think if the process is to stay as it is in the code, and the neighbors are to sort of repetition the neighborhood about that issue, it would depend on that issue, or depend on the results of that being transmitted to the city. We would spend, you know, a couple of weeks with that information, and it takes about, I would say from that point, probably about two months to get you scheduled for an agenda, provided there's an open agenda. So...
So you're looking at December, probably?
I, well, it's not this year.
I'm sorry?
It wouldn't happen this year.
No?
No.
Okay. So I'm not happy with the original motion, and I'm not terribly thrilled with the substitute motion. And here's why. Because it's been well-stated that, you know, this neighborhood has existing CCNRs on it now. And our process isn't perfect. It does need to be improved, but the neighbors went forth with the process that we have currently in place. The CCNRs are in place now. It's like, while it does have its flaws, it's a heck of a lot friendlier than a neighbor feeling like, I don't want to sue my neighbor, but they're building a house that's really inconsistent with the neighborhood, and that's my only option, is to sue them. So, you know, what kind of option does that leave a neighbor with? It's an expensive one, and I would say someone would consider a hostile one. So I don't think that's a very good option. I'm not exactly sure why these properties on Ross Road, who decided to opt out, did so at such a late time. Does staff have any information about that?
No, it was a surprise to us.
Knowing how much stuff is on the staff's, on the staff's plate, I don't know how long it's going to be before every revised process would come back to us, in addition to when the neighbors could take a revised process out and come back with a new, with a new survey. While it wasn't mentioned here, I think the original motion probably relies on either revised process, or, I can't see the original, it's just a denial, but I think the comments were to rely on Eichler, and I would say, standards, not guidelines. I'm always in favor of those. But it's sort of like fiddling while Rome is burning. I don't know of any applications, no one has mentioned any applications coming forward at this point in time, that would change the character of this. But if you just look at this map, you know, look at Thornwood Drive, and look at Evergreen Drive, that's a whole intact area there that's all single-story. All of it is single-story except for one house on Arbuthnot, Arbuthnot, or maybe that's still called Thornwood Drive that circles around, I think it's called Arbuthnot. All but one is single-story on that whole inner circle. So, you know, I look at the Professor Bill Design Guidelines, and it's taken, what, six, seven years?
Okay, but we need to move on.
Okay. All right, quickly. So, well, you can't make a, I guess you can't make a substitute motion, another substitute motion, but I don't believe we can.
Councilmember Philseth.
So I don't think we can. Can we, can't make, can't make another substitute motion?
No. That's right?
Okay, okay.
Right.
Okay. So I would just ask the colleagues who made the substitute motion to reconsider.
Okay. Councilmember, Councilmember Philseth?
Yeah, thanks. We seem to have got into comments and motions and counter-motions and stuff like that. And I actually had a question, right? Which is, the, you know, the, the SSO area is proposed as a fairly contiguous, you know, identifiable piece of, piece of area. And the proposal that we take out the seven houses on Ross sort of chops it, go in through people's backyards and stuff like, they're in between people's backyards and stuff like that. So it changes the, changes the, sort of the configuration of that. And I guess I was just wanting to ask for staff's comments and opinions on that, and is there precedent for that? I mean, have we got other, other, other SSOs that go through the middle of, the middle of blocks and not along streets and stuff like that?
The SSOs that I've been involved in processing have generally followed streets, or in the case of the boundary to the left, a creek channel. We have had, I'm thinking, the Los Arboles did remove two homes on the edge that were on a different street that seemed outliers and were not Eichler one-story homes. So they were a different character, and they were outliers on the street. So, I mean, there is precedent to remove some homes.
There is. Okay. Because, you know, my reaction was the same as, I think it was the vice mayor's on this, which is, geez, you know, we slice a little bit off here, and we slice a little bit off there, and, and I'm sort of uncomfortable redesigning the whole thing from the DAS here, right? So with that, I'm going to, I have a couple of comments earlier, which is on sort of the process, and we're all throwing darts at the process, which very clearly isn't perfect, right? And yet, the process is the process until we have a new process, okay? And, you know, it is what it is, and, and if we don't make decisions because we think we might change the process in the future, then we'll never get anything done. And I think we ought to make a decision on this. As far as the back and forth between 62% and 58% and so forth, you know, I think that just shows that this is borderline, all right? I mean, if it were 80% in favor, right, or 30% in favor, this wouldn't be happening. And I think what this shows is just borderline, right? And at that point, you know, you have to pick a date, right? And it is what it is. And I think, I have a tough time supporting, I mean, I understand what the proponents want to do, and I appreciate what they, what they, what they've gone through to do it. But it's very hard for me to support when, you know, 43% of the neighborhood tonight doesn't want to do it, right? And I think that, you know, again, it just shows that it's borderline. So, and I, I understand the tendency to say, well, why don't we defer it and get some more information and stuff like that? But, you know, I think we've been doing a whole bunch of that in the last few months here on council, and I think, you know, I think we ought to make a decision. Thanks.
Councilmember Wobak.
So I'm in favor of SSOs. And I was accused from one recently because I was a resident of a neighborhood, and just, you know, myself, my family, we were in favor of it. It didn't succeed, didn't move forward, and we were okay with that, because we realized we didn't have the whole neighborhood on the same side. And, you know, we, we had a preference as a family, and we didn't get what our preference was, but we accepted that. I've always said I'm in favor of SSOs if the neighborhood has overwhelming support. You know, something, maybe, maybe consensus is the right word. It doesn't have to be unanimous, but kind of picking up on what Councilmember Philseth was just saying, you know, this is borderline. And I respectfully do want to offer an important correction about something that was said by Councilmember Schmidt. I just want to make sure we're very clear. In a neighborhood, even in a neighborhood with a SSO, 60%, or in a neighborhood, oh, sorry, with a CCNR, or in a neighborhood without a CCNR, 70%, those thresholds are to get a hearing. Those are not thresholds to get an SSO. That allows you to move the forward process, to have this hearing, to have this discussion, at which point, I think it's incumbent upon us on the council to evaluate whether there really is strong, overwhelming neighborhood support, that you're not, you know, talking about, you know, not taking away some people's private, you know, property rights in a neighborhood that's borderline on the issue. You know, if the vast majority of the community, if the neighborhood is on board, then in a hearing like this, we can approve it. I also want to be very clear, signatures are not votes. And that's why we've already directed staff to move forward, looking at the process. And I do want to correct something else I heard. Rome is not burning, and staff is not fiddling. Staff is overworked, because we give them a ton of work, and they are doing their best, and they are already trying to get this process improved. And I think we need to give them the time to get the process improved. Given the level of support in the neighborhood now, even if you got rid of Ross Road, there is not enough support in this neighborhood currently for an SSO for me to be in favor of it. So deferring it isn't going to improve the likelihood that I'm going to support it. It's more likely that I'll support some changes to the standards in this neighborhood, whether it's an Eichler Design Guideline or an SSO. Once we've had a chance to fix this process, to make sure it is city-run, city-owned, that it does not pit neighbor against neighbor, that allows people to vote in private, in, you know, according to their conscience, I think that we need, we do need to have that. And I think we were clear before, and we need to be clear tonight. I know that other neighborhoods are looking at this, they're watching us right now, and they are trying to see, what's the process that council wants to move towards? And we do need to have time to fix this process, and maybe establish some Eichler Design Guidelines as an alternative process. And until we do that, which we've already directed staff to get working on, and they are trying to do, until we've done that, I don't think we should be approving SSOs, especially if they're borderline like this. especially if they're borderline like this. So, you know, I think that there, there is an opportunity for this neighborhood to, to have something done that will preserve the neighborhood character and achieve the goals that the proponents are seeking, but it's not going to happen through this current application. This current application is not sufficient to meet the threshold that I am looking for, which is broader neighborhood support.
Okay, Counselmember Berman.
So I just want to reiterate quickly a point that Counselmember Wobak made, which I think is critically important. I've heard two colleagues tonight say that 60% is the threshold to get approved and that's not true. 60% is the threshold to get a hearing at PTC and eventually for council to weigh in on that, when there are CCRs in place and 70% when not. So I just want, want to make sure the community and the colleagues and the applicant understand that.
I'm going to speak first. And I'm hesitant to open another round here. So first, I want to give a, just a couple of quick comments for staff when you're looking to bring back the future policy alternatives. I think one of the issues is that we need to have a lag between when residents are asked whether they will support or not support a petition and when they're notified and whether it's a 30 or 60-day time period where they basically are given a notice of an intent to circulate a petition before they're asked to, to sign or not sign. I think it lets everybody think about it and not feel pressured and hopefully have some neighborhood dialogue over it and then they can make informed decisions. And I suspect out of that, we'd get fewer reversals over time, that when people sign it, they have thought it through and they'd stick with their decision. Second, I think that when, if we change, the point's been made, if we change boundaries and we really don't know to what degree the initial petition orders still support new boundaries. They may have, we may have higher support than we did, we may have lower support, but we just simply don't know. And this particular petition has already had one boundary change and we're looking at, I think, a reasonable argument for that if we were going to consider it, it would perhaps have a second boundary change. I would frankly, I'm, I'm surprised we have no one here from Lewis because we have five out of five homes on Lewis who didn't support the petition and one of those five is a two-story already. On the other hand, within kind of the, the internal neighborhood of what's Evergreen and Thornwood and, and Arbuthnots within that sector, we have, as best I can count, seven of 30, or 25 of 32 homes in support. And one of the things I didn't hear tonight, but we've heard on the more recent one, is a difference in just participation in the voting by, or lack of participation by absentee homeowners. And the homeowners tend to participate more and the absentees don't. I don't know how to construe those, that lack of participation, is that a no vote or just a non-participation? And I think it's probably a combination of the two. So, if, but if we were to consider the, the petition for the boundaries that came to us tonight, or if we were to consider it for including the original boundaries, with the original boundaries, we're, we're, what, maybe at 50% or so, if you include the, the opposite side of Talisman. On the other hand, if we have this interior configuration, we'd be 78%. It's a big difference. But I, I don't see the basis for being able to have this particular proposal come back to us. And I, I, if we were to exclude Ross, I'd want to have a revote.
A revote of the neighborhood, I think is what he's saying.
I thought the motion said the petitioners would be able to decide.
Well, it would have to be, it would have to be.
The intent was that they would have to re-petition without Ross.
They didn't have to re-petition to change the boundaries.
Yep. That was the intent.
Well, that brings back a problem with the whole process. I think we need to have clarity on when people bring a petition and then we change the boundaries, do the, the prior signatures apply to a new boundary? And frankly, I, I would be much more inclined to support excluding the Lewis homes. Now, we all know that, that, that brings up an argument, that those people then have a potential two-story over the backyard. I expect that we will have Eichler guidelines that would then apply to any Eichlers that would be in that circumstance and that would give additional protection over what we currently have. But we're, we're, in this circumstance, we look at trade-offs and trying to strike balances. And in my mind, excluding Lewis that has zero support for it and considering the interior neighborhood that has very high support would be a more appropriate approach. But with all those changes, I frankly think that it needs to come back under that petition. And I appreciate that there's a lot of work that goes, has gone into the petition so far. So I, I understand that, but I, I think this is a lot of changes from the original petition and including one that isn't even before us tonight that I'd be advocating. So I will not be supporting the substitute motion. Counselmember Holman, did you have something real quick? Because I don't want to open a whole nother round.
Yes, real quick and because one of the councilmen was allowed to respond to something I wanted to too, but I wondered if there would be, if it would be helpful to offer a friendly amendment to, or an amendment to the motion that's up here, is like allow the neighborhood to decide if they would like to exclude the Ross Road properties or Lewis and/or Ross, Lewis Road properties? If that would be agreeable to the maker and seconder?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. And then just really quickly, that was accepted. And then just really, really quickly, in response to a couple of comments that were made earlier, I wasn't indicating that staff was fiddling while Rome was burning, I was indicating the council was, not the staff. I'd already said how busy they are. And the other is, I don't believe an application has to have 60% support to come to the council. I think you, an applicant, any applicant can come with or without staff support, they deserve a hearing in front of the council. So it is not, I don't believe, a 60% support to get a hearing in front of the council.
Well, I'll just state that that is further indication of confusion that we have over the process. Okay, let's vote on the substitute motion. And that fails on a six to three vote with Councilmembers Schmidt, DuBois, and Holman voting yes. So now we'll return to the substitute motion, or excuse me, the initial motion. And let's, unless we have necessity to debate that, let's, I see no lights, we can vote on the board.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes, it's to deny the request. And that passes on a six-three vote with Councilmembers Schmidt, DuBois, and Holman voting no. So thank you everyone for participating. We appreciate that these are difficult decisions and no single simple answer. We hope that going forward, we still have mechanisms, either alternatives or are soon, moderately soon to be included, new tools and revisions to the process that will provide some, some additional approaches. So thank you all.
Oh, sure, I'll leave it. Oh, I was supposed to go. Yes, but talk to him, because he, he, yes, Richard had the same sense I had from what we put. Oh, the bike share.
All right, we will now continue to item number 12, which is review of options and provide direction for a citywide bike share system operated by Motivate and finding that the project is exempt from review under SEQA. Mr. Mello, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Josh Mello, the city's chief transportation official. I'm joined to my right this evening by Chris Correaux, who's a senior transportation planner working on Bike Share. We've also invited this evening Ryan Ruspecki, who's the founder and CEO of Social Bicycles, AKA SOBI, and Emily Stapleton, who is the general manager for Bay Area Bike Share, which is a subsidiary of Motivate. Where's the? Great, so we visited you back in April and kind of gave you a rundown on the status of our current pilot project, pilot bike share system, and had a study session and got some great comments from you on directions you wanted to see our bike sharing program go. Just to bring you up to speed, our pilot program is part of the larger Bay Area Bike Share pilot that was funded by the Air Quality Management District, launched back in 2013. Palo Alto, Redwood City, and Mountain View all participated in this pilot, as well as San Francisco and San Jose. There were 700 bikes total in the entire pilot. Thirty-seven of those bikes were in Palo Alto and we have five stations and those are still in operation today. Currently, there's a large-scale expansion of Bay Area Bike Share underway and this will bring the system to 7,000 bikes, making it one of the largest systems in the entire world, once it's expanded to 7,000 bikes. Emeryville, Berkeley, and Oakland are joining the system. And initially, the peninsula was not included in that expansion. If you remember, we discussed that back in, in April. So our current system, as you know, is not performing very well. We think this is directly related to the small number of stations, the small service area, and the fact that the system uses a point-to-point smart dock style of equipment, which requires a user to travel between two specific places. And if there's not a dock located at either their origin or destination, the system is not useful for that user. So as a result, our bikes only saw an average of .17 trips per bike per day. It's not the most poorly performing sub-system within the pilot, but it's pretty close. Again, we think that's mainly because of the structure of the system. And our goal moving forward would be to get the utilization up to at least one trip per day, per bike, which is kind of the industry standard for a, you know, a system our size. Interesting find, when we look at the data from our system, our current pilot system is the most popular trip leg is between the two most distant stations. So that tells me that we're not really serving the market. The biggest trip pair is from the downtown Caltrain station to the station that's at University and Cowper, which is actually the farthest you can ride from the downtown Bike Share station, downtown Caltrain Bike Share Station. So I think, moving forward, if we have more coverage and enable the people to make longer trips to and from Caltrain and our business districts and downtown and Calab, I think we're going to see an increase in the number of trips per day, per bike. Back in October of 2015, MTC provided some funding to Sam Trans and we kicked off a study in coordination with Sam Trans, Redwood City, and Mountain View, and also attended by MTC staff, to look at what the post-pilot peninsula bike share system should look like. And I updated you on this study back in April and, and let you know that the group was starting to lean towards a preference for a smart bike system, SOBI being kind of the premier example of a smart bike system. And we presented to you all the information we had from that study back in April, and I think the minutes are included from that meeting in your packet this evening. Since that meeting, the city of San Mateo has launched an independent smart bike system using SOBI bicycles. This is not part of the Greater Bay Area Bike Share system and it's intended just to be a pilot, but it's doing fairly well. Again, though, it's not connected to the larger network. A few months back in May, our city manager, Jim Keen, executed an agreement with other city managers and representatives from Stanford University to create what's called the Managers' Mobility Partnership. This includes representatives from Redwood City, Menlo Park, Mountain View, Palo Alto, and Stanford University, and it's facilitated by the joint venture Silicon Valley Group. And one of the first tasks that this group took on was to coordinate Bike Share on the peninsula. And Palo Alto served as kind of the, you know, the point person for these negotiations. We started talking to SOBI shortly after the April meeting, April study session with city council. And at first, we were leaning towards creating some type of independent system and, you know, executing a contract directly with SOBI and perhaps setting up a nonprofit or one of the cities taking the lead on operations. About two months ago, three months ago, Motivate actually approached us, Motivate, the current operator of Bay Area Bike Share, and offered to use SOBI equipment for an expansion on the peninsula and actually provide the city of Palo Alto with free operations for the system during the life of the contract. That's an exceptional offer that not many cities receive. A lot of cities need to put, you know, public funding into the operations or rely heavily on, you know, subsidies, federal funding. So this is a really good opportunity for the city. The proposal that's on the table today, it's in the term sheet that's included in your packet, would require the city of Palo Alto to purchase 350 SOBI bicycles and hub equipment for a total cost of $1,160,803. A portion of this is, would be covered by a grant that we would receive from the VTA, TFCA grants. We actually applied for those shortly before the meeting back in April. And we received $171,000 and that can be used for capital purchase of the equipment. So that would reduce our costs by $171,000. Motivate has agreed to operate the system free of cost, free of charge, to the city of Palo Alto for the life of the contract. And the current contract length that we are considering is five years. And that is to enable us to take a look at the performance of the system and also look at whether there's additional revenue sources that could be available through sponsorship or other opportunities when that five-year contract is up. If we elect to expand the program beyond 350 bikes, and we would actually like to eventually get to 700 bikes using a, you know, through a phase-two expansion in 2018, if we do expand beyond that 350 bicycles, Palo Alto would be responsible for $100 per bike per month. This is also a good deal. In our, you know, prior negotiations before we received the offer from Motivate, we were looking at potentially paying $130 per bike per month. So this is a really good deal if we were to elect to move beyond the 350-bike system. We also managed to negotiate terms for our neighbors along the peninsula. So Motivate's willing to offer our neighbors similar terms if Menlo Park, Redwood City, and Mountain View elect to move forward with a SOBI system as well. So the proposal before you tonight is to move forward with a 350-bike GPS-enabled smart bike system. There would likely be roughly 35 stations, so 10 bicycles per station. There would likely be roughly 35 stations, so 10 bicycles per station, and these aren't the traditional stations that you see today. These are just hubs where the bikes would be docked or parked. Phase two of the system, we would recommend an additional 350 bicycles. We applied for funding from MTC to cover the capital costs, and I believe it's 83% of the capital costs if we received the MTC grant, and that would be in 2018. So we would roll out phase one in 2017 and then phase two in 2018. We also would strongly encourage participation by private entities, including Facebook, Stanford Research Park, Stanford University, the Medical Center, Google, and other employers. You were given an at-places memo, which includes letters of support from many of these entities, and we have continued to keep them in the loop as we've negotiated this term sheet with Motivate, and a lot of these entities are interested in participating in our system, our sub-regional peninsula system. So just to bring you back up to speed on the SOBI equipment, we talked a little bit about this back in April, but SOBI equipment is different from what we currently have in operation because the computing system is actually on the bicycle itself, it's not in the dock. This enables you to greatly save on capital costs. The bikes are a lot less expensive than the smart dock system. They're also a lot more flexible, they can be locked. If the hub is full, you can actually lock it to an adjacent bike rack, and you can lock it up while you're traveling and visiting a coffee shop or grocery shopping to a regular bicycle rack. They also have GPS tracking technology, which allows you, I'll show you a little bit later in the presentation, to collect quite a bit of data on the ridership, trip lengths, destinations, type of trips by type of membership, and a whole host of other great data points. The system's flexible, so with the traditional smart dock system, you have to actually dock the bike in a fixed station, and that's the only place you can leave the bike for it to be considered returned. SOBI's a little bit different. You can dock the bike at a hub, which is shown in the photograph here. If that hub is full, you can dock it to an adjacent bike rack. If you don't want to dock it at a hub and you're in a hurry and you want to just lock it up in front of your place of employment or wherever you're having a meeting, you can do that as well. What would happen then is you would be charged a $3 out-of-hub fee, and then the next person that comes along, they would be able to locate that bike with their smartphone app in front of your place of employment or your meeting location, and they could grab that bike just like, you know, they could at a hub, and they would receive a dollar credit if they return that bike to a hub. So it's kind of a self-balancing, they use financial incentives to encourage people to return the bikes to the hubs, but you still have the flexibility to leave it somewhere outside of a hub if you want. You can also create virtual hubs. This is a map of the downtown Phoenix SOBI system. So you don't have to just have one corner of an intersection designated as your hub, you could designate an entire intersection as a hub. I know Topeka, Kansas, for a certain time, actually designated their entire downtown as a hub, so you could grab a bike anywhere in Topeka, ride downtown, lock it up to any bike rack, and it's considered returned. You don't have to worry about locating a rack. If you're going downtown, as soon as you get there, you just lock it up to the first available location. This is an example of some of the data you can pull using the SOBI system. You can calculate greenhouse gas reductions, you can analyze travel patterns, you can look at the performance of the different hubs. We'll be able to look at the number of trips per day per bike. This is an example of a number of trips. You can split it up by type of membership, so if we wanted to know whether, you know, where daily membership riders were going, maybe we find out that people are coming to Palo Alto Station and then touring Stanford on a day pass, we would actually be able to look at what types of trips and where they're going based on the membership. We could look at where the annual ride, the annual membership riders are going. So all this data will help us better focus our marketing efforts and work with Motivate and target specific populations and demographics and help improve the performance of the system and get it up to that one trip per day per bike minimum that we're looking to get to. This is an example of a map showing all of the trip density overlaid on a city map. I think this is Hamilton, Ontario. So we'll be able to use some of this data to help plan our bike network as well. We'll see where there's gaps, where we may see a certain roadway segment that a lot of cyclists are using, and we don't have any infrastructure on that segment. We could then, in turn, focus our investments on that roadway segment. This is the current fare structure for Bay Area Bike Share. We would not have the ability to set the fare structure. This would be operated as part of the regional system under contract with MTC and Motivate, and MTC have already negotiated the fare structure for that. So a 24-hour, one-day membership is $9. A three-day membership is $22, and then a one-year membership is $88. When you have a membership, you can take an unlimited number of 30-minute rides anywhere in the system. So this is intended, again, to be kind of a last-mile, first-mile connection. A bike share system is not intended to be a bike rental system where you rent the bike for, you know, a day or two or days at a time. These are used for short, 30-minute or less trips. Smart bike-specific fees that Motivate has included, as I mentioned earlier, the $3 out-of-hub fee, this would be if you return a bike, lock a bike up outside of a designated hub, and then a $1 return credit. The annual pass will be increasing from $88 to $144 with the expansion of the system in 2017. And this is very important. Motivate is working to ensure that the system is Clipper interoperable with a Clipper card in the future. In the interim, you'll be able to use your Clipper card as kind of your ID for Bike Share. It'll be tied to your Bike Share account, but you'll only have to carry one card for transit and for Bike Share. In the long term, we're hoping that with Clipper 2.0, you could actually have one account that would pull transit funds, Bike Share, and, you know, other modes of transportation. This is the schedule, assuming you direct us this evening to move forward with negotiations. We would negotiate a contract with Motivate and SOBI in October and November, and then we would return to you with a council likely on the, a contract likely on the consent calendar in December, and then we would issue a purchase order for the bicycles and equipment in December, and by February, we would roll out a station sighting website. This would be a website where residents of Palo Alto could suggest station locations, hub locations for Bike Share, and then I've seen some where you can actually upvote people's locations and have a conversation about the pros and cons of different locations. We would conduct our public outreach, and then in May, we would hope to roll out a demonstration hub and start our equipment testing with a goal of launching the new system in June of 2017. This is a breakdown of the costs. I already mentioned the capital cost earlier. Our total capital cost for the 350 bicycle system would be $1.1 million. This is included in the CIP Project PL 04010. That includes program setup, station installation, the equipment necessary for the hubs, and our operating costs would be $0 per year for the 350-bike system, and then it would be $420,000 per year if we elect to add another 350 bikes in 2018. There will likely be additional staff resources required. We're estimating .5 to 1.0 FTE, and that would be necessary beginning in FY 2018. And that concludes our presentation. As I mentioned earlier, we have both SOBI and Motivate here to answer questions if you have any of them, and we can gladly answer questions that we feel equipped to do so.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions? The staff? Councilmember Wolbach?
Yeah, a couple of questions. I'm not clear on the, I'm sorry if I missed the explanation. What happens if your ride is 35 minutes?
There's an overage charge, and I think it escalates. You know, the longer you keep the bike past 30 minutes, I think it goes up exponentially. But Emily may be able to answer that question more specifically.
Go right ahead.
Sure, yes. So trips are unlimited if they're 30 minutes or under, and there would be an escalating overage fee. We still need to work through specifically what theirs would be. In the current system, in a smart dock scenario, for example, it would be $4 for any trip that's 31 minutes to 60.
Wait, I'm sorry, could you repeat that last part?
In today's smart dock system, it would be $4 for any, four additional dollars for any trip, 31 minutes to 60. The smart bike system would probably be priced a little bit differently since it's a different model.
Okay. And I'll save my comments on that for later. And also a question, well, actually, it's somewhat addressed on slide 15, but I did, just want to make sure I noted correctly that it looks like, on slide seven, in the current planning, that the north corner of town, and talking true north, so northeast and south corners of town are completely excluded, and is that correct? So there's nothing at the JCC to Greer Park, along Fabian, and certainly nothing on San Antonio or north of 101 in that commercial area. I just want to make sure I'm not missing something.
So this is a map that was developed by the consultant that was hired by Sam Trans for the study that I mentioned earlier. This map was developed with the thought that you want to have a minimum amount of spacing, you know, maximum spacing between stations, and we would have 35 stations, and in order to have that maximum spacing and focus on Calab and downtown, this is kind of where it shook out. This is not intended to be the fixed boundary of the phase-one system. This is just a guide to show us what, you know, our fee, it's called a feasibility analysis. Basically, what size system would work in Palo Alto, and that's what this map represents.
Okay, and remind me what it would take if we wanted to see additional locations beyond the 35 added?
Well, there's 350 bicycles. There doesn't have to be exactly 10 bicycles at each hub, so we could have additional hubs with 350 bicycles.
Great, thank you.
We wouldn't want to go too far beyond 35, though, because we want to have a maximum, kind of a minimum number of bikes per hub.
Right, got it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Phil Seth.
So thank you guys very much for bringing us this. I think if this works and lots of people use it and so forth, it would be absolutely wicked cool, and we got the bike infrastructure underway to make it, for it, and all the pieces would come together. At risk of sort of wallowing in Silicon Valley jargon here, I mean, you got technology risk and you got market risk, and the technology here looks really cool to me. But if you go look at the previous incarnation, what we have now, the results, you know, looks like it was very successful in San Francisco and much underutilized pretty much everywhere else down the peninsula and San Jose and so forth. And I look at that, and we got .17 trips per day per bike, right, in the existing system. You read that and say, for whatever reason, for the technology and system of the existing system, apparently, there was just very little demand. Okay? So I have two questions, right? Because it's going to cost us $1 million to do this, okay? One is, what evidence do we have? What's our best evidence that there really is going to be demand for this if we do it this way and we have the less point-to-point and so forth? And then second is, is there any way to, any way to test this without spending $1 million?
So the answer to the first question is, the feasibility study that was completed by the consultant on behalf of Sam Trans looked in great detail at similar suburban communities across the United States.
But not in Palo Alto?
No, similar suburban communities across the United States that have very similar built environment density and have existing Bike Share systems in operation, and that's actually how the system size of 350 was determined. They looked at, you know, varying sizes, they looked at whether it's better to spread everything out or have a very small service area and, you know, not have as many bikes and stations. And what they determined was our ideal system is 350 bicycles in order to get to, I think it's 100,000 trips per year, is what they estimated, and that's based on the numbers from similar suburban communities. The answer to your second question is no. Unfortunately, Bike Share is like transit, you have to have a pretty complete network for people to actually start using it. You can't just run a bus for a couple blocks and then, you know, complain that nobody's using it because it's just not a feasible mode of transportation. So Bike Share really needs to be in places people want to go, and unfortunately, you have to roll out a pretty dense, substantial system in order to truly test whether it's going to work.
So if we get out here two years from now and our average bike utilization is .18 trips per bike per day, you know, are we committed to spending, you know, the next, buying the next, you know, 350 bikes and so forth?
So the existing system was funded by Air Quality Management District funds. It was a pilot. The city of Palo Alto did not purchase any of the capital. There was nobody really keeping an eye on the system to ensure that it was performing well. There's also a title sponsor that is coming on board, Ford Motor Company. They're going to sponsor the entire Bay Area Bike Share system. I think when you have a sponsor, a sponsor's eyes on the system, you're going to have communities with financial interest in the performance of the system. I think you're going to see the marketing efforts greatly increased, you're going to see a bigger push for ridership and, you know, expanding memberships.
I hear a lot about push, haven't heard much about pull. Sorry, just grilling you here.
So I think, I share your concern, but I think having a sponsor whose name is going to be attached to the system and, you know, could be judged by the success or failure of the system, I think will add an added incentive to the performance.
Councilmember Berman.
So thanks for the presentation. I think this is exciting and interesting all at the same time. I had a couple of questions following up on Councilmember Wolbach, just trying to wrap my head around the product and how it works. So it said that, well, the first question is, so there's an additional fee for out-of-system, you know, leaving your bike out of system. If I wanted to go to a friend's house that was off, you know, where there wasn't a hub, but I also wanted to know that that bike would be there when I needed to leave, is there a way to reserve that bike or kind of keep a hold on that for a cost?
Yeah, so Ryan can talk more about this, but I used the grid system in Phoenix when I was there back in April, and that's a SOBI bike system, and I checked the bike out in front of my hotel. I located it on my smartphone, walked out, checked it out, rode to a coffee shop, and then I was able to lock it up and keep it under my name.
Gotcha.
While I was in the coffee shop, and then come out, unlock it again, and then I returned it to a hub and got a dollar credit. But Ryan can talk more about the specifics. I think you can also reserve the SOBI bikes via the app for a limited amount of time.
Hi, how you doing? Yeah, so that's right. It's been fun watching you basically sell and explain my product for the last half hour. So yeah, that's right. So there's both a reserve feature, you can see a bike and book it in advance and have it there when you get there, and if you're taking an extended trip with multiple stops, you're able to put the bike on hold. Now, the way we do that, though, the meter is running while it's on hold, so that's where, you know, the pricing model we should discuss because there's some things baked into our system that maybe not be reflected by that additional time, but yes, the feature does exist.
Awesome. And then another question that I had was, so membership fees, and I've lost my slide, but it was essentially a certain amount for unlimited 30-minute or under trips, but does that mean that, and then there's an additional fee if it's over 30 minutes, but so, if I did want to use a bike for a full day, I just have to make sure every 28 minutes to kind of check one in at a hub and then just check out another one, but that would be a way to do a full-day kind of tour of Palo Alto?
Some people do do that with a smart dock system, but you'd have to be close to a dock with a smart dock system. With this, you could lock it up out-of-hub, you'd be charged the out-of-hub fee, and then you could check it out again.
Which, and without knowing the.
So it may be a wash. Yeah, it may end up being a wash.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry to... Yeah, sorry, to, the, the idea of that trip fee and, and people stringing together multiple trips equalling like a full day's usage, you know, I, I should point out that in many of our systems, the majority of our systems do an hourly rate that's prorated. And so that is something that during the contract negotiation period, we can talk about with Motivate because, again, there's some, some nuances to, to our system. And by the way, they, I should note that they actually operate our system in Portland. We have a thousand bike system there where we're already partners and working together. And so something like that, like that contemplates those type of use cases would be something we'd want to look at over the next two months and, and really nail that down during the contracting.
Great. And then the 350 for the Phase One, does that include Stanford campus or is that not including Stanford campus?
Ideally, we'd like to, you know, have some financial participation by Stanford in order to locate hubs and bikes on the campus. The boundaries of the 350 bike system have not been determined yet.
Gotcha. Yeah, and I mean, you know, we don't want to, more, more is better as opposed to making it even more spread out. But it would be great to have, you know, a good, strong system on campus as well. Thanks.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, just to follow up on the hub and the grid, it seems to me that you're not oriented toward the last mile. Hundred Caltrain riders get off, hopping bikes, go to work. And then the bikes sit there until six o'clock when they catch the last train. You want them to be used in a variety of ways during the day. So what happens if you work a little late, you want to catch that last train, you walk out and there's no bikes. They're all at the Caltrain station. Isn't that a, an issue?
So we've actually talked about that, and I think we're going to have to figure out some type of system to ensure that the bikes don't get unevenly distributed by Caltrain users. Ideally, you would position a hub in a location that has users that are active all day. So the research park may be difficult. There's a couple destinations where the land use is, you know, pretty uniform. And we'd probably want to find a mix of uses to place the hub so that we'd have somebody maybe going to Caltrain in the middle of the day that would return the bike.
Yeah, I'm trying to think if you want to associate these with TMAs, but TMAs have that last mile issue is everyone wants to get from the mass transit to their workplaces. But boy, when they want to catch that evening train, there got to be bikes there.
Yeah, we're definitely going to have to think about how to make sure the bikes remain balanced throughout the day.
The other question I had is you have, your slide 16 gives a view of the finances, and you say $1.1 million capital cost upfront and then minimal operating costs. But in packet page 542, where you have the, the cost for Motivate, they state total five-year cost to city is $6.8 million. Top, very top of page 542, it's the next to last column.
That's the staff report from April?
Yep.
Of this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's not the updated number that's in the term sheet that's before you this evening?
I noticed that, but this is the only one that has city costs over five years.
Yeah, that was before Motivate offered to operate the system for free. That would have had us covering the operating cost as well.
So Motivate is going to get $5 million out of the users. Is that what they're implying? I mean, that's the, the cost of the system.
The 6.7 includes capital, and it would be the, it was based on the smart dock system, which is more expensive. And it also includes operations being funded by the city. So if you look in the, on page 541, the very last row, that breaks out operations, revenue, and net cost per year.
So it brings the cost to the city down to 4.1 million. So I, I guess the question is, 4.1, right?
Yeah, I'm not.
That's what Sobi has for the city payment over five years.
Unless I'm misunderstanding, first of all, this is old information and old data. The proposal is the city pays 1.16 million in capital costs, less 171,000 grant, so a little under a million dollars. And that pays for the 350 bikes plus roughly 35 stations.
Yes, and that's, that's what they have here.
Right. And that, there is no more ongoing.
That's in the first year.
There's no five-year cost for the city.
Both Motivate and Sobi have city costs in there of, one has 6.8 million, the other has 4.1.
This is, this is an old model.
That's the former proposal. It's not what's before us tonight. And it does not apply.
But.
It does not apply.
But someone is paying that money.
So it's actually not a proposal. This was our best guess back in April, what a system would cost. And another important feature that I think we need to note is that the sponsor, Ford, is going to be covering quite a bit of the operating costs. So a lot of the operating costs that you see on here are actually going to be covered by the sponsorship of the larger system.
But the larger system is also going to be operating in four or five nearby cities, each which has a cost burden like that. So they're laying out, what, $20 million? Where do they offset that with revenues?
Yeah.
I don't know whether it's purposeful for us to be looking at what the private parties are doing in their investment. It's really to look at, correctly, at what's before us tonight, not some estimate that was six months ago of a different program. And, and that's what's before us. And it'd be really efficient if we focused on that.
Okay, Councilmember Niss.
Three relatively easy questions. The Air Board had a lot to do with funding the last, not too successful program, I guess. So this time, did we go to them for any grants? Or are you figuring that the sponsor is going to be sufficiently involved?
The $171,000 TFCA grant is actually coming from the Air Quality Management District.
Through VTA?
It's through VTA, yes. The county funds.
Well, let's give the Air Board credit then, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a, a good start, but still, this is a pretty expensive experiment. So secondly, over the weekend, I heard a lot about bike theft, which Jim spoke to earlier tonight, a lot about it, much, much more than I was aware of. Could you speak about this and bike theft? Because I think what I heard from one of you is that if it's really locked up sufficiently, it has two locks. Am I right?
Hi.
Hi.
So first off, overall in the industry, the amount of theft for bike share bikes is incredibly low. We're talking about annual loss rates of 1% to 3% of the fleet.
Can you explain why when?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
It's a big problem with other bikes and other people?
They're not that cool, first of all, really.
So they're boring bikes?
Well, no, so, I mean, but, but his point is, is real. So it's, it's visually distinct, right? So if you're stealing a consumer bike off the street, you can take it to a local bike shop or put it up on Craigslist. If you steal a bike share bike, there's no aftermarket. So the only theft you might experience is like a joyriding or if something, if somebody doesn't lock it properly. You don't really have that kind of opportunistic, I'm going to make money off of it. In terms of security features, though, all of the, the removable parts are protected with a security fastener. So you can't even steal the bike and then part it out and sell pieces off of it. It has an integrated lock that is very secure and can't be cut with normal tools, and it has GPS tracking. So if you are a bike thief, there's other bikes you're going to target, ones that have little cable locks or, or of higher value. So it's just not really targeted. So the theft problem shouldn't, shouldn't be an issue, and it hasn't been an issue in any other major cities that we've been operating.
So we get a boring bike that won't get stolen, but everyone's dying to ride it, right?
Yeah.
So this is really, this is really transportation. This isn't, and as Mark said, if you're going to be upping it every 28 minutes, I don't think frankly you're going to use it for the day.
Yeah, it's, it's designed for short trips, and it's, it is bike transit, really. It's not, it's not a bike that you want to do a 20-mile, a 20-mile excursion on.
So did you talk at all with Google that has a very extensive bike on campus system?
Years ago, I've met with them. I've also met with some of the other big corporate bike share programs in the region. What's interesting with Google is they kind of treat it like a disposable asset. They don't have any locking security on it, and they, they do lose a good chunk of the fleet every year. So, so they don't have any asset control. We have a program in, in Portland, Oregon with Nike at the campus. So in addition to the bikes downtown, we do, we do have 400 bikes on their campus. They had previously unsecured bikes. They had a similar type of loss rates, and they've just introduced our system. And the, the program manager is really happy to have that type of visibility and asset control.
So do you have any figures on Portland? You know, Eric earlier wrote you the .17, and could we get to .18?
Yeah.
What, what is theirs?
Yeah, so we're, we were doing around two trips per bike per day in Portland. It's been incredibly successful. I, I think that, that kind of basing that, that .17 that we see here, it's, it's just with five locations, 37 bikes, it's not incredibly useful. The amount of trips that you could take on it, it just wasn't incredibly useful. So I think if you actually deploy something with the right scale, have the, the, the marketing and the regional buy-in, I think it's going to be a lot more successful. So, you know, we've, we've talked internally about hitting a metric of one trip per bike per day as being a, a good metric for success, and I think we can definitely get that. I think if, if you guys are building out a bike network here and we're tapping into all the corporates and Stanford University, you know, I think we all want to work toward a goal that would exceed that. I think we'd all be pretty surprised and disappointed if we come back here, as you said, a year or two from now and had .18. I think we're doing the work that, that will guarantee, well, that, that we'll hit the targets that we want to hit.
Thank, thank you so much. And just one last question to staff. Where do we get the 1.1 aside from other sources or other, other sponsors? Where, where does the 1.1 emanate from to begin with?
So we have a capital improvement.
Is this Jim's contingency fund?
No, no. Well, I don't know. Can, can we have that? No, we have a capital improvement project, the Bike Plan Implementation Fund. And Bike Share is identified in our 2012 Bicycle and Pedestrian Transportation Plan as a program. So we would intend to use the...
2012? What, what year?
The Bike Plan was adopted in 2012. And one of the programs that are recommended in that Bike Plan is to implement a bike share system. So we have a CIP that's funded upwards of $20 million.
Okay.
Over the next five years. We would propose pulling that 1.1 million out of that project.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Scharf, or Vice Mayor Scharf.
Thanks. Couple of questions. First, 35 stations, and that's on slide seven? Can we, can I just look at that on the, because when I counted the little dots, I ended up with like 11. So you just don't have, decided where the rest of the stations go, or?
It's, it's all of the dots, the blue, the black, and the orange.
So it's, because it says potential station. So it's the orange as well?
Yeah. And again, this is just a reference. This was a model that was done by the consultant to attempt to predict the size system we need in order to get the maximum amount of ridership at a cost benefit ratio that makes sense.
Okay. So 35 stations, 350 bikes, that's what we're going to do. If we go over that, we have to pay $100,000 per bike, right?
A hundred dollars.
An operation per year.
It, it would be $420,000 per year for another 350 bikes. It's $100 per bike per month.
Got it. Okay. So do you expect us to go to a second phase?
I, I think we would look at the performance of Phase One, and then we would come back to you when we hear from MTC whether we've secured the funding, the capital funding that would cover the bulk of the, the capital cost. And then we would have a discussion with council as to whether it makes sense to move forward with a Phase Two.
So why would Motivate not cover those expenses?
Motivate actually proposed to cover the operations of a larger system, but we did not think it was wise to move right into a larger system because the 350 bicycle system is what was modeled to be the most effective in Palo Alto.
So, but shouldn't, I mean, shouldn't we negotiate this later? I mean, if they were willing to do it, why would we, why wouldn't we want to leave open the possibility of having more bikes and have someone else pay for it or pay the operating costs?
We remove something else from right there?
Here we are.
During the negotiations with Motivate, part of our goal was to secure the ability to have Sobi bikes operated on the peninsula as part of the larger Bay Area bike share system. So this was one of the negotiating points for Palo Alto and also on behalf of neighboring cities as the, a different model. Sobi bikes are a different type of equipment that's being used elsewhere in the Bay Area region. So it's a bit of a risk for Motivate.
Okay. So on the, so, so I'm looking at the Palo Alto term sheet here. Could you just run through, it's a little confusing to me, how, how it actually works in terms of the advertising revenues. Looks like sometimes we get some of these revenues or sponsorships, but most of the time we don't. That obviously could be a, a big number. Maybe you could just sort of explain that.
Do you want me to walk through each row or start with one particular row?
I guess I just wanted, maybe you can't do it off, you know, a holistic approach.
Okay.
So what happens is all the 350 stations, they get all the ad revenue on each bike is what I took out of that. But we can sponsor some of the stations, but the overall sponsorship. It was a little confusing, maybe if you just say it.
All right, you want to walk through? I can do it. Okay, so first of all, we are responsible for the capital investment, 350 bicycles, Sobi smart bikes. Anticipated launch date is spring of 2017. It'll be a five-year contract with two additional three-year renewal terms.
But who gets to make those renewal terms? Is it our option or is it theirs?
I think it would be a mutual, it says mutual agreement, so.
So that it's not an option? Either side can say no?
Yes. And an important note is this is just the, the term sheet that we're bringing to you this evening. Any items you want us to take into negotiations, we can certainly do that. So if there's anything that, that draws your attention, please let us know. Operating fees, Motivate will cover the cost of the first 350 bicycles. Additional bikes, the operating costs will be $100 per bike per month, subject to a CPI adjustment. So Palo Alto will be responsible for the operations of 351 and above. Motivate will have the exclusive right to sell title and secondary sponsorship for the system. Assets that may include sponsorship recognition include the bikes, kiosks, racks, ad panels, mobile app, and docks. Palo Alto may fund the cost of capital operations through selling local station sponsorships. So the way this would work is the entire system would be branded by the title sponsor. So it would be, you know, X bikes. The baskets on the bikes would be branded, the bikes themselves, the app. But we would able, we would be able to have City of Palo Alto hub. So we would be able to sell the rights to naming a hub in front of City Hall or on University Avenue. So we could, you know, secure a sponsor that would be able to name that hub. The larger system would still be under the title sponsor, but we would be able to get revenue from individual hub sponsorships. Motivate will keep all of the title sponsorship, secondary sponsorship, and user revenue generated by the system. Palo Alto will be able to keep the Palo Alto will be able to keep the funds raised through the local station sponsorship. Annual pricing will match the broader regional system, so we don't have the ability to determine the pricing of the system for memberships. Siting and installation, Motivate will fund the costs of installation, but we will help them secure permits and help them with siting and the public involvement process in order to determine where the stations will be located. We will waive permit costs, so they would need to get an encroachment permit from the City of Palo Alto for each station, and the current term sheet says that the city would waive the costs to the encroachment permits. And then we'll reimburse them $4,000 per station to develop the site plans, conduct community outreach, and all the other necessary, and that's included in the 1.1 million dollars. Other key components, the regional cities. Motivate will determine by October 31st whether the other cities will get the same exact deal that we got, or whether those cities will be able to sell sponsor, the entirety of the sponsorships in order to cover operations. So the other cities would also be able to have a larger title sponsor and use some of that funding to cover operations, not just the stations, which we would be eligible-
So the other cities will get a better deal?
No.
If they can have a title sponsor, whereas we can't have a title sponsor, right?
So if the title sponsor for the larger system declines to cover operations in Menlo Park or Redwood City, Motivate will let them know by October 31st, and then those cities would be eligible to sell all of the naming rights to the system in order to help recoup some of the cost. We'll be getting free operations-
Right.
-in entirety for the 350 bicycles.
All right, thanks.
Councilmember DeBois.
Kind of one big top-level question is, I think when you talked to us before, we were talking about SOBE. So why isn't SOBE operating the system? Like, why is Motivate involved?
So one of the, this is kind of our dream scenario. Back in October of 2015, we, as a group, Redwood City, Mountain View, Palo Alto, kind of decided that the smart dock system was not appropriate for the peninsula. It's not high-density enough. The capital costs are a lot, you know, more intensive. The one issue with going with a SOBE system and creating an entirely new peninsula bike share system was that we would then have to set up some type of organizational entity to oversee operations. We would also require folks to secure a new membership, so people in San Francisco would not be able to come and use our system with the same membership that they have.
So SOBE doesn't do that themselves?
No. So, so if we had gone with a SOBE system with a separate operator, or had SOBE operated, we would not be able to be part of the greater Bay Area bike share system without some type of agreement between our sub-regional bike share system and the larger Bay Area bike share system. With what's before you this evening, a bike share member in San Francisco will be able to come to Palo Alto and use our system. Palo Altons who have a membership will be able to go to San Jose, Oakland, and Berkeley and use that system. There'll be complete interoperability, but we have the flexibility and the lower cost of the SOBE system.
Okay. Councilmember Ness mentioned Google. I actually had the same question. I mean, have we talked to Google about how they financially look at their share, their bike share? Kind of this idea of just having ugly bikes, and you just don't worry about thefts and have really low operating costs? Do we look at that as an option?
I believe Palo Alto tried that a couple decades ago. I forget, it was the white bikes or the, I've heard stories about it. I think a lot of them were lost, disappeared. I don't know that we'd want the responsibility of responding to complaints about bikes that were abandoned on the side of the road. We would then be put in the place of maintaining the bicycles. Under this agreement, Motivate will handle all the maintenance-
Yeah, it's really a financial-
-and balancing and operations.
Analysis. I was just wondering, obviously you save a lot of costs, but then you have to spend that money picking up the bikes.
Yeah.
But curious if we looked at that trade-off. So I really, I really did want to understand the financial assumptions a little bit better. So do we know what the life expectancy of the bikes are?
Five to seven years is the average.
Okay. And it looked like, it looked like the cost, there was a cost in here of $5,700 a bike? Is that right? Page 653.
So the cost before you tonight is 1705 per bike? And then the additional cost is the station installation? That's how we get to the 1.1 million?
That was spread out over all the bikes?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the $100 per bike per month, when we go over 350 bikes, does that include the first 350, or is it just incremental above?
It's incremental. The first 350 will be free operations for the life of the contract.
Okay. And then it said we potentially need half to one FTE to operate this on city staff. What would city staff do that Motivate want to do?
They would need to monitor the contract performance. We're anticipating putting in certain performance measures, trips per day per bike. A certain percentage need to be in a, you know, good operation, good state of repair. There's going to be certain performance measures built into the contract that we'll need to monitor. I also see us playing a fairly significant role in assisting with marketing, meeting with different entities to try to achieve buy-in and financial support for the system, you know, to go beyond 350 bicycles. I think there's an opportunity to coordinate bike share and development review and TDM and some of our TMA efforts. So I think that, you know, I'm not, I don't necessarily know that it would be an entire half-time or full-time person, that was our best estimate, but I think it would be naive to think that we wouldn't need a staff person to keep an eye on the system and keep an eye on our million-dollar investment, just to make sure that we're meeting those performance goals that we set.
So that staff person is for Phase 1, not after seeing if Phase 1 works?
We're anticipating that we would need to bring either a half-time or full-time person in in next fiscal year. The system would roll out ideally in June of 2017, and then we could have a staff person in place shortly thereafter.
And then we talk about Ford as the sponsor, are they basically paying a lot of that advertising revenue? Is that what you mean by sponsor?
Yeah, they're supporting the operations, so they're filling that gap that's typically filled by public funds.
Are they the title sponsor? Then it'll say Ford.
So they're the title sponsor for the Greater Bay Area bike share system? It has not been confirmed yet whether they will be the title sponsor for the Palo Alto system.
Okay.
But in all likelihood, I would be surprised if they didn't sponsor the entire Bay Area system.
So basically, the millions of dollars that Councilmember Schmidt was talking about is basically covered by that advertising revenue, it sounds like?
Yeah, if we didn't have a title sponsor, and we wanted to break out on our own and create our own system, city staff would have to serve as kind of a rep and go and try to secure a sponsor to cover our operating costs. With this arrangement, Ford is covering it through Motivate.
Right. So it's not really free, it's just paid by ad revenue that we don't get, right? Motivate's taking that ad revenue?
Yeah, essentially, by sponsoring the system, it's one big advertisement. So yeah, it could be akin to ad revenue.
And you touched on this. You know, did we, did we attempt to negotiate for any of that ad revenue when we go above the 350 limit?
Yeah, the $100 per bike per month is a really good deal. If we were to break out our own and secure a sponsor, we would likely be responsible for more than $100 per bike per month. The comparables are in the study that was attached to the April 25th staff report. That looks at other systems and what the cities are putting in and what they've secured from sponsorship. So we've done kind of a check to see whether it would make more sense for us to go out on our own and actually take in the ad revenue and the sponsorship, and it doesn't. It's, this is actually a better deal than it would be if we had to secure the sponsors on our own to cover operations.
When we get the comments, I mean, it sounded like they offered to cover even larger operating costs, so it sounds like financially it makes sense. And then my last question, you know, we had kind of that five-year plan in that old report. I mean, do we have a business plan that kind of shows kind of what steady state will look like over a number of years, and you have to replace bikes, and, you know, how big would the network get? And with all, I'd really like to see kind of ad revenue, rental revenue, and then all the costs.
We can include that in the staff report that comes back with the contract. We can do a pro forma to show, because we're going to experience a certain amount of loss, and we're going to have to replace bicycles. We can build in the staff resources that would be, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think it'd be really helpful just to see it all laid out in one place. Thanks.
So I just have one question. As we were trying to get a sense of the greater utilization rate that we'd anticipate from this program, are there cities where they changed out from the older Gen 1 smart dock to the SOBE system, or an equivalent to SOBE, and saw some kind of comparison in terms of utilization rate as a result of changing the systems?
Well, I think Ryan may be able to speak a little more to this, but a classic example of that is Washington, DC. They had a, you know, a very old-school bike share system, and they were one of the first cities to roll it out, and it was almost a complete flop. And then they rolled out Capital Bike Share, and they went much larger and brought in new equipment, and now it's one of the best-performing systems in the entire country. So they did a reset, you know, after their first exist, their first system didn't work out so well, and they've reaped a lot of benefits from rolling out a larger system.
Okay. All right, great. Let's move on. It's getting late, and we have four members of the public, five to speak. If anybody else wishes to speak, they need to bring a card forward now. Our first speaker is Colin Roche, to be followed by Tom Harrington. Welcome.
Hello, councilmembers, Mr. Mayor. It's a true honor to be here. I'm a local Palo Altoan. Went to all the schools here, graduated from Palo Alto High School. Want to first off, start with the great comment that you made, Mr. Keen, about how electric bikes are the wave of the future, and the future will be televised. But they're not only going to be televised, they're going to be written, they're going to be shared, and they're going to be talked about around the world. If we can adopt something that's exciting and innovative here in Palo Alto, we are the capital of innovation around the world, as far as I'm concerned. Now, our company, Swift Miles, we're building an electric bike transit system, and our system is all based on getting the non-bikers to bike. I think what you're looking at today is actually a great solution. Nothing bad to say whatsoever about, but what could be, what you're considering to be implemented. But we talk about an exciting and innovative way to get around for that true last mile program, we're developing that. And we're actually going to be deploying that in many of the similar areas that's been mentioned today in regards to Stanford Research Park and some of the local businesses here. And as I mentioned, the way we see ourselves is more the position of getting the non-biker to bike. You know, one bike user per day is great, getting it to two, that sounds like something that's like the goal. We're talking about getting three to five bike users per day. And the specific reason is these, is people don't want to sweat to get to work. Studies show that if you have to go more than a mile or two on a bike, a lot of people just simply don't use it. They want to be able to tap into something that's innovative, such as these electric bikes that have really exploded upon the scene in the last, really, year or two. And at that Bike Expo, I think that was a great testament to it. So my whole point here in coming today is not so much to be a road bike whatsoever, but it's just, as you're looking at Generation 2, we're building Generation 3 right here in our own backyard. We'll have, we'll have data to share very soon, hopefully to support, as some of these, some of the comments that suggested about how we could actually have a system that everybody's using. Not everybody, but a lot more people are using. And being something that's a role model that we can, we can speak to across California, United States. But in closing, what I want to, what I want to make sure is that you realize, I want to put Palo Alto on the map for innovation, for taking advantage of all the different things that's happened in the, in the industry with electric bikes. Our whole system is based on tap, rent, and roll. It's very simple to use, we've got all the GPS tracking, and when you're done, you get all the great data. So I hope you'll consider us to be a conversation in the same discussion, and we at some point can roll something out here shortly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Harrington, to be followed by Jamie Jarvis. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilstaff. My name is Tom Harrington. I chair the Mountain View Transportation Management Association, MVGO. We support the work that Palo Alto has done, along with partners Motivate and SOBE, along with, and encourage the city council to, sorry, I'm going to read this directly, I apologize for that. And encourage the city council to proceed with directing staff to return to the city council with a contract to implement a SOBE smart bike system operated by Motivate as part of the Bay Area bike share system, structured to allow participation of other peninsula cities and private entities. We further encourage the Ford-Motivate partnership to make the program available to other peninsula cities. To foster the idea of a regional bike share, MVGO will be hosting an informational forum on the Intuit Mountain View Campus on Monday, October 17th. Please visit www.mvgo.org for details in the schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jamie Jarvis, to be followed by Adina Levin.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name's Jamie Jarvis. I'm the Transportation Demand Manager for Stanford Research Park. The proposed expansion of bike share that you saw tonight in Palo Alto will provide the scale and locations necessary to form an effective bike share network in Palo Alto. We commend City of Palo Alto's staff for developing a proposal that uses state-of-the-art technology to maximize the flexibility and cost-effectiveness of bike share in Palo Alto while maintaining compatibility with the regional bike share system. This is truly a best-case scenario, and we look forward to bringing bike share to publicly accessible locations within Stanford Research Park. The Stanford Research Park Bicycle Champions, a group of active and engaged bicycle commuters, are excited about the potential of bike share to provide convenient connections to public transit and facilitate midday trips to dining and shopping destinations throughout Palo Alto. Stanford Research Park companies, many of whom offer generous and effective transit subsidies to their employees, are enthused about the potential of bike share to provide a convenient, low-cost, and flexible last-mile connection between Caltrain and their work sites. In addition, a robust bike share system along the peninsula reduces the need for train riders to transport bicycles onboard, which will improve the efficiency of Caltrain through increased passenger capacity and decreased loading times. We strongly believe the synergy between bike share, Caltrain, and the efforts of the Stanford Research Park Transportation Management Association will attract new transit riders and convert occasional riders to frequent users, thus achieving important trip reduction benefits. Stanford Research Park looks forward to working with the City of Palo Alto to realize the full potential of bike share in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Adina Levin, to be followed by our final speaker, Andrew Boone.
Good evening, councilmembers. Adina Levin, with Friends of Caltrain, supporting Caltrain and sustainable transportation in Palo Alto and the Peninsula Corridor. It was great to be out at the Bike Expo this weekend, seeing, you know, whole families and people who obviously, like, may not have been out on a bike recently, out biking. And the bike share system will be complementary to the infrastructure investments that Palo Alto has been making and continues to make. It's highly complementary to transit, on public transit like Caltrain, and also, you know, things like the city's investment in the shuttle system. Imagine somebody taking a shuttle into downtown for lunch and realizing, oh, I need to pop over to Whole Foods to pick something up, you know, and I only have 10 or 15 minutes to do so. So it really is complementary to the other modes. And as the speaker from the research park was saying, in terms of being able to use the system not only for first and last mile, but also for lunches and errands, it's great to see the regional cooperation. The SOBE system is a much better match for our local land use, so all of these things are a really good fit. One concern I have, echoing several councilmembers, is the pricing, because some of our use cases, we have the lunch and errand use case. The San Mateo, the first peninsula use of the SOBE bikes, they have a slightly different price, where you have, for $15 a month, you have one hour per day, or five bucks an hour, and it winds up being much more accommodating if you need to go for lunch for an hour or to run an errand. 30 minutes is too short for lunch or errand, and you wind up getting penalized for doing like a normal short trip. And I would suggest that for the SOBE model, and for our land use, and for some of the expected use cases, to negotiate for a pricing system, you know, not for an all-day bike rental, that's where you can go to the bike store and rent a bike, but for something that also supports that lunch and errand use case as well. So in sum, very complementary to the other investment. So in sum, very complementary to the other investments that the city is making in giving people transportation alternatives, and hope that a slightly more flexible pricing structure can be negotiated. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Andrew Boone.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Andrew Boone. I bicycle for most of my trips, so I am very glad to see a practical bike share system coming to Palo Alto soon. The pilot system was simply way too small to really be a success, but with 350 or 700 bikes, you know, then you have a critical mass of stations and bikes, and there are lots of destinations from Palo Alto, from downtown, that you've got to have a bike to get there. It's just too far to walk to a lot of jobs. So I think it will be successful. However, I'm, I'm a lot more skeptical than the previous speakers on the terms under which you're getting a big bike share program. This program is not revenue neutral at all. It's a multimillion-dollar investment by the city. It surprises me to see written in the terms that the city would purchase all of the bikes, all 350 bikes for $1 million, that then will be used as advertising space for someone else to make money. That's not the deal that Motivate had with MTC for the big Bay Area bike share system. Motivate provide the bikes in that case. That seems a lot more logical. They're the ones advertising on the bikes and receiving the revenue. So that's the first thing. Secondly, it's going to take another employee, or half of an employee, to manage such a system. You're not getting revenue, any of the revenue, to support that, so it's an ongoing cost. You know, I think bicycling and bike share is a good thing to invest in, of course. I think millions of dollars investing is appropriate, but not when you don't have to do it, and it's going to add up to a significant amount of money, and it's taking away from funds that the city has to invest in things like infrastructure. So you're choosing this over doing some other improvements because of the way a contract is structured. I think you should ask for part of the revenue for other reasons. If you receive part of the revenue, say 5% or 10%, whatever, you know how much total is being made there. You know for the next long-term contract, what are you dealing with? Also, you could ask for, in the contract, for data. I'm not sure, I didn't read anything in the staff report, but it would be very useful to have access to the actual data. The public would like to have access to the data as well. We do have access to the Bay Area Bike Share System data, so we can analyze where in the system the bikes are being used the most, even down to the station. That data should be available for this system in Palo Alto as well. I personally think it's a bit problematic to have Ford Motor Company be a sponsor of a bike share system in Palo Alto, because they're selling cars and trucks. Their revenue, their money comes from selling vehicles, which are really, it's moving, it undermines the system that you're promoting. If we're promoting bicycles, driving a Ford car is an opposite choice, you know? We're supposed to be moving away from fossil fuels and away from dependence on automobiles and not advertising for them. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember DeBois.
Yeah, I'd like to move the staff motion.
Would you like to speak to it?
Yeah. So I support this idea, like the technology, have used it in other cities, and I think we should do kind of a 350 bike, kind of phase one. I am concerned about locking ourselves into an expensive contract. It's kind of a free taste, but then it costs you more once you go over the 350. And it's kind of not really, it's not a good incentive. Like, the more successful we are and the bigger our network is, the more the costs escalate. And I know you feel like it's a great deal, but I'd like to see maybe some alternative contract approaches, if you guys continue to negotiate. You know, we're giving them ad revenue that covers the operating expenses for the first 350 bikes. Kind of, I was thinking along the lines of the last speaker spoke, which is, you know, as the network gets larger, the, the ad revenue gets larger, the ads on the mobile app, all that stuff, there's kind of a network effect. So I think we should either try to negotiate that, you know, if we pay the operational costs, we get a large percentage of that ad revenue, or if they keep all the ad revenue, then we have very low or no operational costs. And I think getting access to some of that data is also a really good idea. The other, the other point I wanted to make was, I hope we can find places for these hubs, ideally partnering with private companies, where it's off, in off-street locations, and minimize removing parking spots. I also like the idea of evaluating different trip lengths, as Adina Levin suggested. And then, as I asked before, I'd really like to see a financial plan when we start to go to contract on this. But, again, I like the idea, I think we should try it. I'm just concerned that, about locking ourselves into something that could turn out to be a lot more expensive than we think.
Vice Mayor Scharf.
So I agree with everything Tom just said, to start with. When you said that we could actually have gotten a bigger system and they would pay for the, for the operating costs of the bikes, I actually thought that may make more sense, especially since, are we planning on going to 700 bikes in 2018? Because I read that in a couple of letters.
So we applied for an MTC grant to cover up to, I think, 83% of the capital cost to expand by another 350 bikes. I think we would only do that, you know, with your approval after we received the grant award from MTC. And that's why we have to wait until 2018, because the grant's not available until that point in time.
And so that's really the issue, right? I mean, because we're funding the first million, whatever, of these bikes, and you think to expand it, we can get MTC to pay hopefully the next million, and that offsets the operating costs, and that was your thinking behind doing 350 as opposed to 700 now, and have them pay for all the operating costs for the 700, but we'd pay 2 million upfront?
Correct. When I came to you in April, I told you the Sobi system cost $1 million. If you look back at the staff report in April, and that's what we're bringing to you tonight.
Okay. But I mean, we did look at whether or not it made more sense financially to spend the 2 million now and have them pay the operating cost for the entire system of 700 bikes, and you get a bigger, faster network effect and do that. I mean, I-
So they only offered to operate 510 bicycles, and that was with their current equipment? One of our negotiating points was that we wanted the Sobi equipment, and they went out on a limb and made us that offer, because currently, they don't operate systems with two different types of equipment anywhere in their network, so this would be the first.
Okay. Well, thanks. I know you put a lot of effort into it. It actually seems fairly well thought out, so I actually appreciate all the hard work you put into this. Oh, and the one other point I had that Tom didn't mention that I was a little concerned about, was, we're going to spend a million bucks roughly. We have five years. If for some reason they don't want to move forward, continue moving forward after five years, you know, where does that leave us? I was concerned about us not having the ability to say, no, we want to continue this, this process after five years, and what that means if they don't want to continue it.
Well, assuming the bikes are still operable and can be used, we could operate the system ourselves or find another operator.
Yeah, but without their support, that's probably not going to work, right?
Yeah, we would need to find some way to cover the operating costs that would be added-
I'm guessing, I'm really just asking if you want to look at that in negotiations and see if you can come up with something that limits our risk on that.
Councilmember Wolbach.
So I'll be supporting the motion, but I do have a couple of questions and a couple of concerns. So I'm really sure, at this point, and I want to be really clear, this isn't a contract that we're approving tonight, and the contract is not a done deal. Just because we're saying we're okay with moving forward with negotiating a contract doesn't mean we're going to support it when it comes back, and we still have that option, right? So I'm going to be looking for some things in that contract that alleviate some of the concerns that we're hearing. I agree with the comments from the maker and the seconder, and I'm going to mention, kind of continuing on this, this question of, of use cases that I alluded to earlier in my questions, a couple of members of the public have brought up. I'm going to bring up just three examples, and if you have an answer for me now, great. If you don't, I'll want something similar to this, you know, clarified when this comes back. Use case one, let's say my colleague Mark wants to check out a bike from a hub. He lives downtown, so there's almost certainly going to be a hub somewhere near him. He wants to bike over to a meeting that I'm hosting at my house, or in the Palverdi neighborhood, which is a place listed on the current map. Again, this is tentative, not, it's totally in a desert here, not, there's nothing in Palverdi at all, hardly nearby. So he comes over, two-hour meeting at my house, a couple other people, we finish up the meeting, he bikes home, so it's two 20-minute trips with a two-hour gap in between during which it's held. How much is that going to cost him? Second use case, city employee takes Caltrain to work, which is great, we've been trying to encourage more of that. City employee takes Caltrain to work, after work, they want to get some exercise, picking up on our Healthy City, Healthy Community Initiative, and they decide, I want to go bike over to the Baylands, and we have a bike bridge now, not a great one, but we have a bike bridge that'll get them over there. They bike over to the Baylands, they come back. Total ride, maybe hour and 15 minutes of riding. How much is that going to cost them? Use case three, let's say hypothetically, we do set up a bike hub somewhere in the Palverdi neighborhood. I pick up a bike near my house, ride over to, say, Pete's Coffee and Piazza's, grab some coffee, get some groceries, hold the bike there so that it doesn't disappear while I'm doing my shopping, because I want to make sure I've got something to carry in my, you know, to take a bike home on. I bike home, drop the groceries at home, drop the bike back at the hub near my house, and then walk the couple blocks back to my house. Total trip, maybe hour and a half. Two, five-to-10-minute rides with maybe an hour or 45 minutes in between for the, running the errands. How much is that going to cost? So again, if we have some ballparks, that'd be great to hear tonight. If not, I'd-
Let's, let's have them come back. That's, that's very specific.
It was not my expectation that we would have that tonight, that's why I'm mentioning it now during comments. My point is that that's, those kinds of use cases that are not just somebody using it strictly as get off Caltrain and then ride the last 15 minutes to their job, those are other use cases, which are important to spread biking to more non-bikers in Palo Alto, like myself currently, you know, that's, I think that's important to see, and that's going to be influential in my decision when we see this contract come back. Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to be brief. Under most of those use cases, it's real simple, get your own bike. And it works better, it's really the way to go, that's, that's really, let's not make this thing overcomplicated. There are, there are certain use cases that are really ripe for, for bike share programs, and there are a lot of other use cases where you ride your own bike. Most of them, I would say, for those of us in town. So we can overanalyze this and, and steer it sideways from what it's actually focused on, and I think we should stay on its intended purposes and, and judge it on that basis. All right, let's vote on the board. That passes unanimously on a 9-0 vote, so thank you all. We look forward to hearing back on it. All right, and our final item is adoption of an urgency ordinance, amending the urgency interim ordinance, which preserve ground floor retail uses on a citywide basis, which, and would now allow educational uses on the ground floor of parcel zone RT 35 along Alma, and finding the amendment exempt from SEQA. So, welcome Director Gittelman.
Thank you, Mayor Burton, councilmembers, Hillary Gittelman, the planning director. As you know, the city council has adopted an urgency ordinance to preserve ground floor retail uses throughout the city. In late August, we heard from several property owners who have found this citywide approach problematic. They're property owners who have ground floor spaces that are outside of our commercial cores. At that time, the city council suggested that we allow educational uses on Alma Street, where two of the properties were located, and we've prepared a draft ordinance that would make that happen. This ordinance is very specific. It would not change other terms of the urgency ordinance, which would remain in effect until April of next year. Between now and then, we'll be bringing two permanent ordinances back to you, one about downtown and one about the balance of the city. So we're looking for your support this evening on this very limited modification to the existing urgency ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, and I'd encourage everyone, especially at this hour, to be focused, and let's not ask extraneous questions nor make extraneous comments. So Vice Mayor Scharf.
Since we had a discussion as previously, can I just make a motion?
Oh, we have a public hearing. No, you can't.
Okay.
Okay, Vice, Councilmember Wolbach.
I was going to ask the same question.
All right. Any other questions? And so at this time, I will open the public hearing, and I have no speaker cards, and close the public hearing. Vice Mayor Scharf.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Vice, motion by Vice Mayor Scharf, second by Councilmember DeBois. Would you like, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wolbach, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just briefly, I think we discussed this extensively last time, and so I haven't changed my mind, so I think we should just move forward.
Councilmember Wolbach.
No additional comments.
Anyone else? Councilmember Holman.
So I also haven't changed my mind. I still support this staying in retail use, as Director Gittelman had supported the council's urgency ordinance, or, excuse me, interim ordinance previously. And the reasons, I don't want to go through them all again, but the reasons are because I think there are certainly use, businesses that would like to be in these less-than-core retail locations that cannot afford the core retail locations, and we can support our embryonic retail uses. And another thing that causes me to still support that same position is, since the last meeting and this one, I actually encountered someone that I actually happen to note to some extent, who actually had, as a retail use, had tried to rent that space, and they were offered a very high price for rent. So it's not that nobody in retail wants to rent those spaces.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I'm a little skeptical of this. Just before the retail ordinance comes to us, we are granting a waiver for educational purposes. Maybe it turns out to be code training, but that then becomes a permanent waiver when the new retail ordinance comes out in three or four months. And one of our goals with this area is to do mixed use. It's a good area for denser housing, and to grant a permanent waiver before, you know, in the short term, before we have our full retail ordinance doesn't seem to make sense.
Councilmember DeBois.
Yeah, I agree with almost everything Councilmember Holman said. I feel like this is spot zoning. I haven't changed my mind since we discussed it before either, and I won't, I won't be supporting the motion.
So let's vote on the board. That passes on a 5-4 vote with Councilmember Schmidt. I'm sorry?
As an urgency ordinance, it requires a supermajority. I think it's seven votes.
Aren't we coming back with what you guys asked us to come back with quickly?
On page two, it says it requires eight votes.
Councilmembers, the motion fails as an urgency ordinance. Councilmembers, the motion fails as an urgency ordinance. We can prepare, take it to the Planning Commission, and bring it back to you in some more time as a non-urgency ordinance, although we have to look at that to be sure we can amend an urgency ordinance that way.
And when would the permanent ordinance be considered?
We're having a discussion with the council per your direction on the downtown retail protections on the 17th of October. So that's to get your direction in preparation of preparing an ordinance that would go then to the Planning and Transportation Commission and back to the council.
That's downtown?
Yes, and it could include this area. It's downtown and sofa.
It is downtown and sofa, not just downtown?
That's correct.
So it would come to us on, you said, October-
For discussion on October 17th. Based on your discussion, we'll prepare an ordinance, bring it to the Planning and Transportation Commission, hopefully in December, and get back to the council early in the new year.
So unless we have a motion to direct this go back to Planning Commission, could we even take that up tonight if we wanted to? Can they even take up directing it back to the Planning Commission tonight?
Sure.
Okay.
The process we're talking about effectively brings the whole ordinance to the Planning Commission in the timeframe that we would be looking at.
So I understand that. My question was to give the council its alternatives, and I wanted to establish that the second alternative was even permissible. So we could do the first alternative, which was to have it go through, this narrowly go to the Planning Commission for, as a non-urgency ordinance, or to await the process that was just described to us beginning in mid-October. Sounds like we would probably want to take it all up as it's scheduled. Is that correct? Unless we have a motion, otherwise, that'll just happen. All right, so that concludes the side. Thank you. Sorry. We now have, I was just looking over the staff report and looking for the, in hindsight, it's clear that the requirements for urgency ordinances on the supermajority, I just was trying to find it in the staff report, and so everybody understood that in advance. Sorry? I was looking, that's what I was saying.
It's on page two of the staff report, at the bottom.
So our final items are intergovernmental legislative affairs, I'm not aware of any, and then council members' questions, comments, and announcements. Does anyone have any? And on that note, the meeting's adjourned.